Good evening Yorktown and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. If you could all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can all join me in a moment of silence, bow our heads and remember the five hundred thousand now Americans who have lost their lives due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, including many of our own neighbors here in the town of Yorktown. And tonight we say a special prayer for all of them and their families in our country and our community. Thank you. Introductions quickly again. My name is Matt Slater, Town Supervisor for the town of Yorktown. We're joined by Councilman Vishnu Patel, Councilwoman Alice Roker, Councilman Ed Lachterman, Councilman Tom Diana. We have our Town Clerk Diana Quast. We did have our Town Attorney Adam Rodriguez. I don't know if he dropped off for a second, but we do have our Town Attorney Adam Rodriguez. We have a number of number of topics to get through tonight. We're very excited about. We're going to begin with our first item, which is the four-ten Ellington Road Dam Project. And we'll have our Town Clerk let in our participants. We have Marcia Saunders and Peter Scott. And this is in regards to a wetland and tree application. We have Rich Williams, but Rich is on for a later applicant.
Yep, and it's Marcia Saunders. I'm on and hopefully Peter-
Hey Marcia, how are you? Is Peter joining us?
He should be, absolutely.
Okay.
How about the mom?
Oh, thank you for asking. She's doing okay. She's actually had some health issues. Yeah, she's actually-
She's better got than me.
Well, she's doing chemo right now for pancreatic cancer, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so of your next agenda item, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Please, please give her our prayers and folks, Marcia.
No, thank kind of you. She's a trooper, so you know.
God bless her.
Yeah. Is Peter not on?
Yeah, Peter's right here. Got him.
Oh, great.
Hi.
Well, well, thank you all so much for, you know, every time we meet about this, I have to start off by thanking you all so much for all of your support and help on this. I hopefully we're coming to a close on it. You know, Peter can tell you we've gotten permits now from, I think, six or seven different agencies. He'll run through it. And even an Indian, an American Indian tribe had to sign off. So hopefully, hopefully we're coming to a close. But maybe Peter, I can hand it off to you to give everyone the update.
Sure. Quickly, I could share my screen if you want to see what the pond looks like.
Sure. Yeah, please.
If I may, let me try that. So showing on my screen right now is a picture of the dam itself. Basically, it's on a D E C water course. It's controlled by Army Corps. And it's also in the New York City D E P watershed. So all those agencies were involved in approving the particular project. D E C was looking at wetland plants. They're looking at parks and rec. They're looking at archaeological. They're looking at endangered species, including long-eared bats, which I'll go into in a minute. The D E P was looking at the stormwater management, the erosion control sequences, et cetera. Army Corps basically distributed this dam to twenty-five different agencies, of which we had to respond to about fifteen of them directly. And we have permits on every single agency. And the urgency of our submission before you is because we have long-eared, we're in the we're in the epicenter of long-eared bats in Westchester County. And there's a prohibition on clearing of trees after April first. And the bats live in the caves in the wintertime between October and April. But they came out, they come out of the caves in April and they hibernated in the trees. And we can't cut the trees down while bats are there. So therefore, we have a hard deadline of clearing trees. The dam itself is about two hundred and forty-six foot long, one hundred and forty-eight feet wide, about almost an acre in surface area. And to meet the criteria of the D E P D E C, we had to put in a forebay, which is fifty-four hundred cubic yards. We had to put in a pond, which is two hundred and seventeen thousand gallons. We had to put a safety bench around the perimeter, fifteen feet wide. Downstream of the dam, we had to put a plunge pool in, which is sixty-one by seventy-six feet by five foot deep. And beyond that, we have a stream vein, which is a device to collect stormwater and treat it when it discharges from the dam. The dam is, half of it, this portion is an enhanced earthen dam that was there before. This is a site of a failed dam. And so we're working with the same footprint, but we're bringing up the technology to new standards. There's a seventy-six foot long concrete dam here, which is about eleven feet tall, and that's about four hundred cubic yards of concrete. The water depth is about six feet deep at the maximum. There's a spillway. This is a spillway-controlled dam. The water goes through a chute, goes down about a distance of about fifteen feet in a parabolic shape. So it's a very smooth transition of water leaving the site. And then we also had to put in a safety valve, which was missing in the previous dam. We're putting in underground pipes and drain-down devices to allow us to lower the dam water in case of emergency or in case of impending floods such as a hurricane. And we can drain the entire, ninety percent of the pond can be drained out within forty-eight hours.
Oh, wow.
So we have all these devices which were required. What took place when the, what happened is that the dam wasn't being maintained. It wasn't owned by Marcia at the time. And it was in transition between State of New York Parks and her ownership. And large trees fell down along the western side of the of the dam, parallel to Ellington Road. And they basically made large voids in this concrete and stone dam. And it actually failed. And there's portions of the dam laying downstream. There's a very large eroded crater when the water went. It made a big gouge in earth about six, eight feet deep. And the old spillway is, the remnants are laying right here at this location. It's a somewhat sensitive area because there's a cemetery right here. And so we had to work within the confines of protecting the integrity of the cemetery, rebuilding the dam and working with the terrain that we had in terms of earth and the holes where the dam used to sit. We're also, we also have to put in stone armoring on the western side of the dam. Because it's, there's a stream that goes like this through the area of the dam itself. And that's eroding this hillside, moving toward Ellington Road. So if we never did repair the, we never repaired the dam, this stream would be over here in a few years. It keeps migrating in that general direction. The site contains about four foot of sediments, and we are removing them off-site. The sediments are due to a one-hundred-and-four acre watershed that runs down through a culmination of various streams that all enter right here into this dam location at a pretty high velocity in a very silty material. So right now, the stream is running like this. And there's a big keg of dried sediments, which will be removed off-site through an accessway being built here. It has its own sedimentation control structures to control the movement of material. And we also have another accessway provided here, so we can always get to the dam to maintain it as well as to build it. The D E P and D E C have approved all the procedures for removal of materials. We are removing about sixteen hundred cubic yards net off the site. And anything that we can use material-wise, we're stockpiling here to form a berm. So the problem we have to do is unfortunately with an old dam, is there's tree, big trees lining here and trees are lining here. And per the New York State D E C dam regulations, you can't have trees in an earthen berm or near a concrete dam because it makes the dams fail, which took place here at the site. So this is the end of a saga. And we're hoping that we could work and accomplish possibly waiving a public hearing, having an approval granted for us. The town engineer has everything on the project. He has all the paperwork. He's gone over it a couple of times with, with detail reviewed with D E P and D E C. And so unfortunately, just kind of ran out of time. And we're hoping that we might be able to move it forward in some manner.
So you're, yeah, you're, Peter, you're, the tree removal that you've listed on your application is twenty-one. Is that still accurate?
Yes, it is. Yes. It's in a big band right here.
Mr. Scott, you had presented an application to our town engineer for this work?
Yes. Quite a while ago, actually. More of it.
So let me ask you this, in regards to the long-eared bats situation.
Yes.
How much time do you, would, I'm just trying to understand timeline here. So you can't cut down trees after the first of April.
Right.
That's how you stated it. How much time would you need or how much time would it take you to remove those trees?
Typically, it takes between two and three weeks. It can be done quickly, but the mobilization part of it's the hard part. Because, you know, if we have snow, we have to, we would basically be coming in through here with machinery.
Yeah.
Just to get to the location. And then we can't drop the trees into the pond. We make a real mess. We have to basically get a machine in there and push the machines within the confines of the property line, but in an area where we can harvest them in an economical manner. And our harvesting is coming through this direction. So you're going to see a bunch of trees splayed out this direction and this direction. And then we'll have to move in there and start moving all the material. There are additional trees that have to come out of here. They're actually at forty-five degree angles because they're ready to fall into the pond. We need to remove a couple there as well.
But, but, but the, but for the process of removing the trees, you're saying it's going to be two, maybe three weeks?
Yes. Because I'm allowing an extra, that includes an extra week in case inclement weather, you know, stopped halfway through it.
No, I understand. Mr. Rodriguez, can you fill us in from the codes perspective? Does it allow for us to provide any type of relief from a public hearing for wetlands?
No, it does not. It's a non-administrative wetlands permit, which, which the code says shall in the public hearing. I mean, it's pretty clear.
There's no way we can, because we already have all the permits from other agencies. Because it's not, it's a, it's actually, it's actually a D E C well. I'm not sure jurisdictional. I think our jurisdiction is with D E C.
Well, it's in the town of Yorktown. You're under ours as well, unfortunately.
Okay. I was giving, yes.
If we can go to our Town Clerk Diana Quast. Diana, how quickly can we schedule a public hearing?
With following the processes that we have to follow, I would say March sixteenth, we can do a public hearing. But the applicant's going to have to work with us quickly on getting everything noticed.
Yes. And so March sixteenth, Peter, if all goes as one would hope, does that give you enough time?
Yeah, if we can close a public hearing and are we doing, are you doing a secret determination with the wetlands or is it coordinated or uncoordinated? It's coordinated? Okay. So, yeah, we would do a secret determination. We'd like to refer it as a type-two action. Then at that point in time, we would close the public hearing, do the determination, and if we have a resolution ready at the same time, it would, we would be done on the sixteenth. That would give us enough time.
So is the board then, for the board's consideration, we can refer this out to the necessary agencies? And we can direct the Town Clerk to set the public hearing for the sixteenth?
Motion. I have a question.
Second. One sec, I'm sorry. We have a question from Councilman Patel.
Two bats, two bats, and it's two nights, you know? There was yesterday and today. You must be counting so many bats and trees.
Yeah.
Get to sleep now.
Yeah, unfortunately, I hate to say this, but Yorktown seems to be a critical habitat for the D E C. So you better watch out at night.
You're right.
A lot of bats around, I guess.
For Mr.-
Is it light in the morning?
So that this is also a topic of conversation at last night's planning board meeting, too. So that's-
Another thought, yes.
Okay, so then we have a motion from Councilwoman Roker, a second from Councilman Diana to refer this out and set the hearing for the sixteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The opposed motion carries. So we'll refer it out. And if you can just work closely with our Town Clerk.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Excellent.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, Marcia. Thanks, Peter.
Bye, Marcia.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Be well.
We'll go over to our, our next topic of conversation. And that is, that is Paint the Town Purple. Leanne Todd is going to be joining us. There she is. Hey, Leanne.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Hi, everyone.
Is Kate joining us tonight?
Kate's not able to join us tonight.
Okay.
No problem. And I see we have our Parks and Rec Superintendent Jim Materano with us. I thought it'd be good for me to join the conversation on this one.
Great.
So by all means, Leanne, why don't you talk to us about the annual cancer awareness events that I know you guys normally hold here in the town of Yorktown, which were a great success? And let us know how we can be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, thank you all for your time and for your continued support of ACS and Relay for Life. So this year, we would like to, the Relay for Life of Yorktown Committee, which is really made up of community members and volunteers, would like to hold our annual Paint the Town Purple, which we traditionally do in May. They'd like to do it at three locations this year and really kind of spread out the opportunity for fundraising and awareness. We were able to do this successfully in the fall. We did it on a day in October. And we, you know, we maintained, you know, obviously, social distancing. We're very careful about things like safety. But it gave us a great opportunity to spread awareness and just remind people in the community that we're still out there as ACS, supporting people impacted by cancers, by cancer and survivors within Yorktown community. And we'd like to, in addition to having Paint the Town Purple, on Friday, May fifteenth is the date that the committee has proposed. We would like to do it at three locations. So that would be Commerce Street, which is where we traditionally do Paint the Town Purple. They'd like to also do it by the library and then also by the JV Mall. And so spreading it out and kind of taking a multi-site approach and really just kind of painting all of Yorktown purple, the idea being. And then in lieu of doing an actual relay event this year, obviously, just out of a precaution for, for safety and, and obviously with everything going on with COVID, we'd really like to do a drive-through event at the JV Mall as a continuation of Paint the Town Purple, so it would take place that same evening. And have an opportunity for cancer survivors, caregivers, really anyone impacted by cancer to come out and be cheered on, you know, from the safety of their car. We would like to invite, you know, our, our local business partners and supporters to set up signs, which we would take care of setting up in advance. Just things, you know, reminders that the community is still here to support our cancer survivors, our caregivers and anyone impacted by cancer. And so really folding it into a one-day kind of multi-site socially distant and safe event.
We need Dave here. Dave Pagnelli. We need, since he's the highway superintendent, we're going to need him in three locations now.
So, okay, he's got plenty of spray paint, I think, for all three. So I'm sure he'll be happy to do it. Forgive me, Leanne, I know we talked about the JV Mall. Where do we leave off with them? I have to put you in contact with them, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll put you in contact with the, and I had a call with them earlier this week. So I'll connect you with our partners over at the mall. And Jimmy, anything you want to add to this?
Yeah, just add me to that email. I can help get in contact with Heather over at the mall as well and help facilitate these great events.
Great, thank you.
It's exciting as always.
Now, would you be doing a collection on Lee Road or in the mall itself? What were your plans?
Well, so, so I would work out logistics, you know, obviously with, with Matt, with whomever. I think Lee Road was a site that was proposed to us. I have On Hill or Lee. So those are kind of the two sites that I have. My committee of volunteers is obviously, you know, far more familiar with Yorktown. They all are Yorktown residents. And so it would really be about kind of where that we feel we could obviously be the safest, but obviously get the most traffic. And we would work with, you know, whomever, you know, kind of wherever we were told to be, we would be there and stay put so that we could be safe, obviously.
It might be safer if you did the drive-around in the mall area rather than on the street itself.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. Like, we've done other, other drives in the town. That definitely would be better. Okay, so then we're going to, if any other questions from the board? I think the board's very supportive, of course, and it's great to see some normalcy return in a safe manner, which we're very excited about. Obviously, the traditional Relay for Life event that usually takes place at Veterans Field is a great, great event, but we're very happy to see that you're finding other ways to recognize and support those who are currently battling cancer and remembering those, unfortunately, who may have lost their battles with cancer. But the town, I think, is fully supportive. We'll put you in touch with the Jefferson Valley Mall folks, Jimmy, and Jimmy as well, Materano, Parks and Rec Superintendent. And we're looking forward to Friday, the fifteenth of May.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Talk soon.
Take care.
Thank you.
Always great seeing you.
Bye.
You too, bye.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next presentation, which is thirty-seven hundred Barger Street.
Barger.
You got it.
I think that's Barger Street, Matt.
Not for true Yorktown, if it's not.
Can you mute him forever?
Talk to the counselor.
Carol's been trying for thirty-plus years. It hasn't happened.
Mute him.
We're joined by Dan Porco and Ricky Williams. We also have with us our Director of Planning, John Tegger. Gentlemen, good evening.
Evening.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
I believe as part of our approving resolution, we asked you to come back for additional approvals on architectural, canopy landscaping and signage designs. And I'm hoping that's what we're here to talk about tonight.
Correctness Supervisor, and good evening, members of the board. Rich Williams, Inside Engineering. As I mentioned, I have Danny Porco with me from NY Fuels. Diana, just to make sure, our project architect was going to try and join us, but he had multiple meetings. Is Darren Oliver Young in the waiting room?
I'll let him in now.
Okay, thank you. Just to get started, we did recently resubmit a package to the board. It included our site plan drawing set, which was updated to respond to comments of the resolution of approval. A stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is still being reviewed by the town engineer's office, but we believe we've addressed all their comments. So hopefully, it's a sign-off coming. We submitted the concept access easement plan, which was discussed at the last meeting and showed that future provisional access to the neighboring property. We submitted a copy of our D E C freshwater wetland approval, which we recently had reissued because as part of TVing the sewer service line, we actually found there was a septic on-site. And we'll be maintaining and keeping that septic as part of our development. We submitted architectural plans from G K and A Architects, which is why we have Mr. Oliver Young here tonight. He is the architect of record and will be walking you through those plans. So what I'd like to do, just to start things off, is I'll share my screen. And we will go through the couple of site plan comments that were received. And is everybody looking at the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we were asked to take a look at the landscaping in this concrete island at the last meeting. And we discussed providing some low-level flowering plants. They have to be low-level because it's in the DOT right-of-way and we have to maintain sightlines. So we've come up with a mixture of daylilies, purple cone flowers and butterfly weeds, which is a small, low-growing flowering plant, which will surround our monument sign. And I'm going to come back to the monument sign in a few minutes. But what I'd like to do is, unless anyone wants to talk about the landscaping, I'll turn it over to Oliver to talk about the architecture.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can hear you.
All right. I'm going to try to share my screen real quick. All right, can everybody see a PDF of the floor plan in front of them?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. My name is Oliver Young. I'm a principal at G K and A Architects, and I was directly responsible for the preparation of these drawings. We had originally appeared before the abaca back in November. I think it was mid-November of two thousand and nineteen. The building floor plan hasn't changed. It's fifty-three by thirty-eight, so it's a little over two thousand square feet, two thousand and fourteen to be exact. I'm not going to dwell on the floor plan. I just want to focus on the fact that it's a typical C-store layout, where the customer area is the central core of the building and the perimeter of the building is all the service areas, such as food prep, storage, sales counter, walk-in cooler and bathrooms. So it doesn't give us much opportunity for glazing apart from the front elevation. And I will get back to the glazing a little more. I'm going to jump over to the colored elevations, which we most recently updated. Building itself has a central peak in the middle of the store. I'm referencing the front elevation at the top of the page. The peak caps off at twenty-eight foot, four inches above grade. And you'll see on either side of that gable, zooming in. We have a flat roof element. That flat roof element, the parapet tops off at twenty feet. The roof itself is about four feet lower than that, a high point of approximately sixteen feet. So having a four-foot minimum parapet, what that allows us to do is adequately screen all the rooftop equipment that we're going to have, which with the C-store and a little bit of food prep, there's a fair amount of that. Focusing on the front elevation facing Barger Street, we have three smaller gabled elements lower down in the building. They're actually overhangs. A larger one centered over the entrance than two smaller ones flanking that. The prominent materials in the building are going to be a stone veneer, which we call the base. That goes up to about three feet on all three sides of the building. On the fourth side, that goes all the way up to the underside of those gable entry elements, which is about ten feet. The material from three feet on up is a fiber cement siding. It's going to be in two colors. One's a light gray and the other one's a light green. And then all the trim elements you see are also fiber cement trim material, and those are going to be painted a white color. The roof you see, which is, the sloped roof is a standing seam metal, and it's going to be black. And the one thing I want to point about that, that gable element in the center of the building here, you'll see it with the signage, is that goes from the front of the building to the black. It's not the front of the building to the back. I'm sorry. It's not a faux element. We paste it onto the front of the building. It's integral to the architecture. So when you actually go inside the store, it's going to be a raised ceiling in the center of the space, and it should look pretty nice. So I believe that covers everything I wanted to discuss here. Actually, I want to jump over to the gas canopy elevations, which we also prepared. Unfortunately, I don't have them colorized, but I can talk briefly about them. And you'll see right here, the columns aren't just small steel columns, they're actually intended to be about two feet by two feet. They're gonna have the same exact stone base that we're proposing for the building. And then from the top of the stone base to the underside of the canopy fascia, we're gonna do a panelized system in the same white and gray that you see on the building facade. The fascia where the signage is, is gonna be a white, probably ACM material, and then we're proposing a minor pitched roof element, which is gonna have the same black standing seam metal that we're proposing on the building. Knowing how small the site is and how close the canopy sits to the building, we felt, we felt it was very important to match the colors and materials between the two. Uh, that covers everything I wanted to focus on during my presentation. I'd be happy to go over any questions, comments or feedback the board has.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, uh, how many guests, uh, pumping? Uh, two each side, will be a four pumps or two one each?
Hold on, just one second, Rich.
There's.
Or dispensers.
There is gonna be four dispensers for a total of eight fueling stations.
Okay.
Which is consistent, most of what we're presenting as far as the architecture and the site plan tonight, uh, is essentially the same as what we previously presented to this board in Applaka. It's just been taken from a site plan drawing level to a construction drawing level.
Uh, and, and, you know, the reason I'm asking, you know, is, uh, the US car, you know, like, you know, there are more car passenger side is a gas, gasoline, uh, you know, peeling, uh, the cap over there. And, uh, there are less car on, 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 on left, uh, on the right, uh, right hand side, okay? I mixed up with the left and right, the other side. So, you know, like, uh, place at the beaches, there are so many times, big, big line and then the gasoline, those who are peeling it from the right-hand side, is nobody there. So I was wondering, you, you will have extended pipe, uh, hose, so you can, uh, peel your gas from all four side at the same time, or somebody has to wait?
That, that's correct, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to have extensions on the hanging hardware, where they'll be able to, a customer will be able to, uh, fuel a car that has, uh, a left-hand side, uh, filling port on the actual car, if they're pulling in with the passenger side facing the actual dispenser.
Okay.
On the monument sign, just, uh, real quick, uh, John Tegger, any, any feedback from, from you?
Can I, can I, before we get to the, because, uh, I think Rich is gonna talk at length about the signs, can we just go back to the elevations for a moment?
Please. Here we go.
Yeah, so I, I just recommend that the south elevation in particular, since it does prominently face Barger or Barger Street, depending on which direction you're coming from. That, you, you, that was for you, Tom.
I know it was.
Uh, I, you know, I recommend trying to, uh, do something with that facade, you know, even if it's faux, uh, and I, I really dislike that term, but nevertheless, faux windows or some faux glazing to just activate that, um, facade somewhat for the Barger Street, um, approach.
Okay, I, I do have an idea of how we can address that, and that's one reason I wanted to start my presentation with the plan in terms of the, the necessity for faux windows there as actual transparent windows. Uh, what I'm, what I'm thinking we could do, and unfortunately I didn't have time to draw this up, is take this little white band that we have here, which tops off the stone veneer. I would wrap that around the side of the building facing the street. Then I would add probably two or three faux windows in the same proportions that we have on the front elevation. Unfortunately, they won't be transparent, but they'll have, there'll be spandrel glass, which has the, the finish pre-baked onto it. So it'll tie the, the side elevation directly into the front elevation and provide some aesthetic relief as opposed to just the, the service door that we have on that elevation.
That, that sounds, yeah, that sounds like a good approach.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm more interested, I, I would be grateful if you did it on both the north and the south. I, I'm attaching more importance to the south elevation.
Okay. Um, Danny, unless you have any objections, I don't see why we can't take that same design and apply it on both sides.
No objections whatsoever, I think, John, it's a great idea and I think it, it, it will give a much clearer and better image to the building.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that fully, thank you.
Hey, we'd be happy to do that, thank you.
John, any other comments on this before we go over to the sign?
Is there, is there lights at nighttime, you know? So visibility for what kind of building there or it will be only at the, uh, only at the lower, lower part of the building?
Um, we do, we, we prepared a full photometric plan as part of the submission package. Um, it modeled, uh, the three building lights, I believe we have one, uh, sight light and the effect of the canopy lights on the site. So basically, you're gonna have six canopy lights, three building mounted lights and one, uh, LED mounted light.
No, no, the reason is, you know, at the birds at night, you know? And they lose, uh, their navigation in the, in your brain. And sometime daily dive, the lights are too strong, you know? And, uh, there are so many bats around in the town too, you know? So you're gonna have to watch out that we don't kill the younger bats and then other, other birds, they are migrating at nighttime, you know?
Um, one of the things, and, and Oliver, if you wanted to stop your screen share?
Sure.
And I can, I can touch on the lights and then wrap that into signage. Councilman, you bring up some great points and.
Really, nobody says like that, I'm no good, you know?
Understood, so I, this is the photometric plan that was submitted. Um, if you note, the one, you know, most of our developed area is obviously towards this intersection. There is a little corridor among, uh, along Barger Brook, which, which is our eastern property line. You can also see that the only light that we do have over in that area is this one pole-mounted, which is an LED, so the bulbs sit up into the fixture. So you'd actually have to be looking up at it to see it. It's not like the old Cobra heads, um, and it is a direct downward. Um, and you can see that most of the lighting that we have, uh, provided for the site is all focused forward towards Barger Street.
The ASW one is the wall pack, right, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, great.
Out of curiosity, uh, it's been a while since you've been before us, was there a traffic study done? Because you're increasing the amount of pumps by one, correct?
Correct, um, yes, there was a traffic study done that was submitted as part of the planning process. Um, and this project is also being reviewed by New York State DOT because Barger Street is actually a state road. Um, and our highway work permit is imminent, we just have to submit the final application and bonds and then they're gonna release the highway work permit.
And, and entrance to the peeling, uh, peeling station, will be one-way or, uh, both-way, you in and out?
So one of the benefits we feel that this site plan is gonna offer is, right now, we actually have two entrances on Barger Street and this free-for-all expansive pavement off of East Main Street. So we have one, two entrances, and then this wide open area, where it almost feels like East Main Street is really more part of our parking lot, which I believe has caused issues for Yorktown in the past. We're gonna close off this northernmost Barger Street, create a one-way circulation through the site, um, which again was all studied as part of that traffic study, to make sure we weren't impacting the intersection.
Yeah. Think it's so much better.
And, and Rich, what happened with the, um, issue of access for your, your neighbor on the back?
Great question. Um, we provided that, uh, sketch CE one as part of our submission package, which illustrated the ability to show an access, uh, to this property if there ever is an ability to reach an agreement or they come forward with a development.
And, and it, it's dependent upon an additional ten feet from the southern neigh- neighbor. Just so everyone's clear.
Right.
So is that enough space for a fire and engine and ambulance like that to go in a hurry? You know, if they have to pass through that?
The, the twenty feet, yes, it would be.
Shall we talk signage?
If there are any other questions from the board? Let's go to signage.
All right. So as part of our package to you, uh, we provided the proposed signage. Um, I'm gonna start with the canopy signs. This first cross-section you're looking at, I just wanna put it in context. It starts in this corner and comes around the angle to this corner. So as you look, that's why you see two mobile logos. Um, we do have two mobile signs, we're permitted thirty square feet. These two sum up to twenty-six square feet, so we're within the parameter the code allows.
Okay.
Um, on the freestanding sign, your code allows thirty square feet per side, sixty square feet aggregate. And it also allows us to provide, um, on that same sign, uh, the identifiers for fuel pricing. So that's a, a small area to provide all that information between the fuel prices, the store logo, et cetera. So we are gonna ask for relief tonight. This is the freestanding sign or monument sign that we've talked about in the past. It was actually a town board comment to us not to do a traditional pole freestanding sign, but to actually create a monument sign. We had, this is the same outline that was shown on our original plans. Um, we didn't get a chance to update it per the final architectures, but the base of this sign has actually gotten, which is this dark gray ring, has actually gotten smaller. So we're able to maintain more space to the property line than you previously saw. The base of the sign is eleven foot four inches by two foot one inch, marrying the elements from the building to the gas pump dispensers to now the freestanding sign, we have that same stone veneer with a stone sill. Around that, we're gonna have, uh, trim and top trim that surrounds the cabinet panel. The cabinet panel itself is ten foot six by nine foot eight. So if you look just at the cabinet panel, we have a hundred and two square feet of area per side where thirty's allowed. If you look at the entire area, including the trim, um, it's a hundred and thirty-eight square feet per side. Um, so this is where we would be asking for the relief. Um, also, we do have the pricing signage on our freestanding sign as permitted by code. The other signage that's included in our package, um, I believe you saw on Oliver's colored rendering, but that is the Cocoa Farms logo on the front fascia of the building. We would have a six by six sign for a total of thirty-six square feet. Your code allows us to do one square foot per length of building plus a quarter of a square foot for each foot of building setback above the required. We have a fifty-three foot long building and a thirty-foot front yard setback with a building that's setback eighty-nine feet. So we would be allowed almost sixty-eight square feet of building mounted signage, and again, we're only at thirty-six. So while our freestanding is more, as you move into the site, we've reduced it down. Um, we do recognize that your code has a provision for merchandise signage, which will carry forward, um, for the store's operation. Um, right now, we don't have any merchandise signage proposed. Um, and then the last thing that we're gonna seek relief on tonight is, again, we've reduced the base of this sign. Looking at the new base, which is the two foot one inch wide by eleven foot four, we would be able to maintain three feet from the property line again, stepping it back from what we previously showed you, which offers us the ability, honestly, to build it. We didn't like the idea that the, the base of that monument sign would be right near the property line.
Um, just one quick question, if I may?
Sure.
Um, how, what was the square footage of the proposed, the sign you're proposing?
The definition, I'm, and I'm just being candid, the definition of sign in your code is not clear as to whether or not I should take the trim or just the cabinet panel. Just the cabinet panel is a hundred and two square feet per side.
Okay, and our code allows for what, John?
Uh, it allows for sixty, I believe, a total of sixty, so it's thirty per side.
Thirty per side, so we're, we're going basically triple that.
Right.
Um, that does seem like a rather large sign, I'm just trying to compare it, I'm, I'm trying to get a visual on, on, uh, other signs in town that, that are of similar si- you know, of, of, of similar message but of smaller size.
One of the interesting things in your code relative to gas stations is it encourages the placement of these pricing signage on the freestanding sign. So when you look at the thirty square foot that your code actually permits, and I'm sorry to, to say it like this, I'm not looking to insult the code, but it doesn't really offer enough space to have a gas station brand, a company brand, and the pricing that your code encourages all on one sign.
Okay.
So I have a question on that for John Tegger. John, out of the current, um, monument signs that we've done, have we had this triple, the triple the, uh, allotment on them? Have we run into this problem?
I don't think we've had quite this large for a, a gas station monument sign. We've had probably, um, I'm guessing, because I haven't gone back into any records, maybe, um, a third less. So I think we've gone, you know, up to s- in the sixties per side, maybe seventy, something like that, so.
I thought we did additional with that gasoline station up in Jefferson Valley.
On most, on most of the gas stations, you've modified the sign requirements.
Yeah.
Sign requirements in the code are, uh, older requirements.
Right. For this is required.
Right, and, and when we, when we did the sign, uh, manual, uh, and redid the sign code, you know, going back a ways, and we were, um, putting forth that we prefer monument signs, we did not update the, um, size of them, and they are typically larger than, than you're going to see with thirty square feet per size, per side. So it, the thirty, the thirty square foot is, um, it is, and needs some updating because we have been doing monument signs that are larger than that, so.
It's not been that long that the pricing has been required by Westchester County, so I could understand that.
Yeah, that's another reason as well.
Thirty feet, the, the thirty feet per side, if you, if you think about thirty square feet, it's a little bit more, but the size of a sheet of plywood, approximately four by eight, is about thirty-two square feet.
Right.
I, I have a question, if I may. Whatever put inside the building, you know? Do you have anything to tell us or you do it on your own? How you wanna set up inside for food and everything else? Inside?
Believe the signage inside the building isn't, uh, is not final, I mean, Danny wants you to jump in, but it's typically not reviewed at this level, mostly focused on outside.
It's not regulated inside the building.
Councilman Diana, you, you were finishing a point, do you wanna continue?
Yeah, basically, um, uh, before I would, I could say yes to something this large. Just looking at it, it's, what, what is it, fourteen feet tall approximately? Um, it almost seems like it's gonna be blocking your establishment. It, it, it really seems too onerous for this particular site in this particular neighborhood. Um, if, like I say, if it was, you know, sixty square feet on each side, I could say, all right, you know, you're talking basically triple what our code even allows. Um, I don't know, it seems like, it seems like it's very large. Uh, I gotta be a hundred percent honest with you. Um, because it can be what, ten by, that's what, basically, ten by fourteen.
You know, I, I, you know, Tommy, I agree with you, but the mobile station that's right here in town or the one that's down on two oh two, are we talking similar size?
No.
No.
I don't believe so, I'd have to actually measure it, but I believe there probably half of that. If I was to guess, what would you say, John?
The most, the mobile station in Yorktown Heights?
Yeah.
That, that might be something like a five by nine or ten. So that's fifty per side, about a hundred or so, is my guess. I can go back and look a- at all these things if you want.
Yeah, that would be appreciated if you could.
If we can get an average of what maybe the signs are on, on the monument signs, you know? Um, like I say, it just seems like, like, like that's. Um, like I say, it just seems like, like, like that's.
I think we need to consider, um. The fact that we've asked them to do monument signs. Perhaps we need to consider updating our code.
I, I agree with you, Councilwoman Rucker.
We can certainly. Yeah, we can certainly take a look at the measurements of the sign and see if we can. Um, make it work and shrinking it, um, so everybody's. Happy and, you know.
Okay, I mean, that's fair.
I just wa- make it into a condition.
Yeah.
What was that?
I, I have a question. I, why do you need a bigger sign? Everybody goes by GPS, you know? You know, you exactly know where you are and all that. So make it a little shorter, you know?
You know, the.
The thing with the sign, it, with the, with the monument sign is that as we shrink it. Everything becomes so small that it's very, very hard for customers to, to actually see what we're posting.
Yeah. Uh, I, I think.
Yeah, we can. We can certainly take a look and, and see if we can. Make it and arrange it where we can minimize square footage on it.
You know, everybody's gonna know it's a mobile station. I mean, we can't, we can't. Say that because it's gonna have mobile up on the canopy and so on and so forth. So if this particular sign was. Let's say any area between sixty and seventy square feet. Um.
Sure.
You know, we'd still mo- know it was a mobile station. And we, and we probably.
Tommy, I'd like to see what the others are.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it, it, we, we've been setting these up and for a little bit now, there've been quite a few. And, you know, to change the playing field, when the other people retold. You know, keep to fifty or sixty and, you know.
Correct.
Yeah, to go to a hundred, I, I.
You know, I think any code has gotta take into account, and who law says that. A consumer must be able to read the sign, to read the price. When they're driving by, so to have anything smaller than that can work with the law. So I think we've gotta be able to, to go between both, I understand.
Yeah, I, I mean, yes, they have to be able to read the sign. I, I don't know, I'd have to see. I'd have to get a, a scale on it to see exactly how big the numbers were and so on and so forth. Like I said. Uh, let, let, let's do an average on what the signs are on, on some of the other places and go apples to apples, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
And John, let's all, John Taggert, let's also have a conversation about updating the code. I mean, I think that's clear that it's, that we need to since we're granting. Uh, relief to many applicants, especially for our gas stations that are coming to us with these signs. So maybe we can have a conversation about that and, and look to up, update the code.
You know, just one thing I see, a, 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 a. Big thing I see immediately is that Coco Farms is part of. The mobile sign. Maybe that could be dropped down on the actual. Um. Uh, brickwork or, or, or stonework there to say Coco Farms. And that would drop your sign down that much more, leaving the same. Size mobile, so on and so forth. I don't know how important that. Coco Farms is to you, I'm, I'm just a suggestion.
As I say, we definitely take a look, I mean, if, if the. Board is okay, and I was pulling the actual monument sign out of the equation. While we make adjustments to. Um, shrink it as much as possible to, you know, for the board to be happy with what we are proposing, uh, you know. We're okay with it.
Said, said a little differently, I think. Danny is um, and, and Hanny, who's actually in the waiting room, is very excited to get going. Um, and we're at the last milestone, and I think our ask would be. You know, we hear that we have to come back to discuss this sign a little more. If there's any way that we can move forward in pulling a building permit, so that we can actually start the demolition renovation work and get the building going. Leaving this freestanding sign is an open issue to come back to the board with. That would be tremendously helpful to us.
I don't see where that would be a problem. Um, John, um. We, we can work out that logistic, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think uh, you've, you're pretty much uh, ha- have accepted the landscaping plan. We went over the lighting plan, which I don't think that we needed to. Uh, the, the architecture you are fine with, and the architect will add. Some of the things that he described.
Right.
So I think, I think as soon as they make that architectural. Modification, we can bring the plans to you since you accepted those things. For signature, signit- signature by the supervisor. Uh, which will free up the building permit, and then the sign package can remain separate. And you can get to the place there that you are comfortable with, with the sign. Then get that, a resolution on the sign and the, and the required variances for, for that, and uh, issue a separate package for that after the fact.
Makes sense.
I, 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 I agree, um, um. Yeah, there's no reason that, you know, uh, uh. Request for demolition permit couldn't be applied for it at, at, at this point, as far as I'm concerned. Um, and then we can move forward with deciding what we wanna do, you know, come up with some, some type of middle ground on the sign and so forth, so that. Everybody's apples to apples, you know, we don't have pushback from. From other gas stations where you let them do this, how come you didn't let us do this, and so on and so forth. We just keep everything. Um. The same. Or close to it.
Okay.
Oh, the last, last question for the engineer, can I ask him?
Yeah. Last question.
Uh, uh, let, let me just ask you guys, why don't you have a three D simulations, you know? It doesn't take that much time, you know, then nobody will ask you questions, okay? Whether you wanna move right, left, big side. And it will be very easy and doesn't cost that much money, you know, even before you used to make a model. This is very easy.
What I will tell you is, what is seemingly easy.
Yes.
Because of seemingly easy, because of computers often takes a little bit more manpower and energy than often goes.
Well, listen, you do every day, okay? The hamburger makes this, every day the same hamburger. More you make, the more faster you do, you know?
And, and the only.
I mean, uh, many of the models are available, because you are doing, you know, this thing all the time, and the gas station like that. John, he used to make a model for the monument over there with the copper and all these things, uh, this is on a computer.
So just to recap, we're gonna, we're gonna ask you to resubmit the ar- the updated architecturals with the, with the updates that we talked about tonight. Canopy looks, we're good with, landscaping we're good with, and we'll break out signage to deal with separately.
Right.
You know, I just had one last question. Uh, I know there were a number of spills in the file. Uh, from back in the day, and we spoke about the uh. The, the uh, contamination on the, on the property. I just wanted to see if any testing, further testing has been done and. What, what resolution there's been on that.
Well, we, we haven't, we haven't uh, done any testing on it yet, and as we mentioned in the past, uh, um, meetings. We've had, as we encounter anything, all the agency would be involved in uh, any cleanup that might be. Um, uh, present itself.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm sorry, I was just live in by Diana, and uh. I just wanna say that all the spill cases were closed. And as we go further with the project, anything. Might be found, we will deal, notify all of. Uh, uh, the authorities, obviously.
Okay, I'm, as, as.
I'm sorry, Tahani Sadala, and I just got in, I was just live in.
Okay.
As, 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 as a Shrubalk resident, I drive by there constantly. Um, and I did notice, if I'm not mistaken, you guys did have geological borings done there, if I'm not mistaken. I thought I saw the machines in there at one point in time. Um, and there's no one that's more. Um. I shouldn't say no one, but I'm sure I'm one of many that are going to be very, very happy when. The uh, excavator's first swipe takes that building down, it makes it look decent over there, because it's been a blight on the community now for. Too many years, so I, I'm as anxious to move this forward. And cautiously anxious to move it forward so that we get things done and they're done properly.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay.
Understood.
Alright.
Very good, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you too, good night, guys, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our next topic, which is HESP Solar. Welcome Susan Brody of HESP. You're also joined by our Parks and Rec. Commission Chairman Matt Talbert. We also have with us Jim Oderano, our Parks and Rec Superintendent. Uh, and Adam Rodriguez, who's been instrumental in uh, in this process as well. Susan, how are you tonight?
I am good, thank you. Thank, thanks for the opportunity to um, present.
Absolutely.
And answer any questions you may have.
Why don't you, I know you sent over a um, a presentation, some slides. Uh, recapping the project. Why don't you walk us through it again? I don't know if you can share your screen so we can make this public.
Uh, I'm gonna. Try to do that, um. One second, give me a half of a second to see if I can. Um. Get that up on the screen.
You're doing that.
That's usually what I say, I'm gonna try and it usually ends tragically.
Let's see how this works.
While you're doing that, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, quickly, do you wanna just remind the public what steps we've already taken in this endeavor? Uh, and what we've, what, what actions the board has already approved?
Sure, we, we did an RFP over the summer. Um, and we received, I believe, six proposals. And, and ultimately after the board reviewed the proposals, a decision was made to authorize. Need to engage with HESP, try to negotiate the actual terms. Of a lease agreement, consistent with the terms of HESP's R S, uh, RFP response. Um, and, you know, we've done that. I can, I mean, I can go through the points at a high level, but I think, I think Susan's gonna do that.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll let Susan do that with her presentation, but I just wanted you to remind everyone. Uh, watching and for the public and for the record that. This was done through an RFP, the board did award that to HESP, the RFP. And we've been working, or Adam's been working with Susan and her team. Uh, as well as, uh, we've gotten some input from our Parks and Rec Commission and our Parks and Rec Superintendent. Uh, as we've, as we've um. Finalized the terms of this agreement.
Yeah, and again, the, the, the terms that, that are now, you know, before the board, it's essentially the same terms that were already approved, you know, months ago.
Yeah.
Right, they're the same, right, this is, this is more of a formality. Uh, and, and, and reminding our, our residents. Uh, of what this uh, is going to do. So Susan, are you able to share your screen? Perfect.
Yeah, did that work? Okay. Okay, great, so um. I'm just gonna go back and go through them one by one. This is a little bit of an overview of who we are, happy to answer any questions that any. Anybody may have about us. We have been developing projects since two thousand and ten. Projects, the majority of our projects have been for municipalities and boards of education. Similar projects in scope to this project, and we're very excited. To, to put together this proposal and to move forward with the project, get the lease executed so we can get engineering going. And um, and so on. We offered four different options. To the, um, we responded to the RFP with four different options. Um. And I understand that um, Yorktown opted for option four. The reason we've included all four options in this PowerPoint is because. Until we actually get out there and do the engineering, and until we, I understand that there is um, some parkland alienation. Um. Scope of work that we all haven't, you know, done a deeper dive into, where the ground mounted system. Um, is. Proposed to be, I just thought it's important that in case we end up having to slide into a different option. That everybody is aware that there are different options. So if, if it doesn't work out the way we intended to, our intention is to. Build option four, which is a canopy system on the parking lot, a small ground mounted system. And, and to provide battery storage at the site. And that would be option four. Um, option three was just the canopy system and the battery. And in, you know, if there were to ultimately be a problem with the ground mount, we could easily just revert back. And do the canopy system without the ground mount. It's not, you know. It's, it, you know, it's a little bit of, of a smaller project, but it would still be an amazing, and, you know, an amazing project that would bring a lot of benefit. To Yorktown. Um. And options one and two, I, you know, don't have the ba- battery option, but I think that battery is. A tremendous benefit to, to the. Residents of Yorktown and to the township. This is the, the proposed site layout. This is a very rough draft before we actually get engineers out to the site to do, you know, to dig in deeper. We're proposing to install a parking kit. A canopy system here, carport system here, a ground mounted system up here. We're proposing for the storage system location to be up here. Um, and. This was, this would be the system i- if we were to have to. Lose the, the ground mounted system up here, this part of the system would stay exactly as is, and the storage system would still be here. But we're, we're really hoping to be able to um, build the ground mounted system as well. Uh, these were the options as we proposed them. Um, in case, you know, there are questions about how many watts will be. We'll be building, how many modules will be on the site? On the individual sites, how many KW a year, KWH per year will be. Um. Will be produced, that's here in this column. And um, this speaks to the battery storage system, which will be providing two megawatt hours. Um. Okay, we also included some of our references, recent projects that we've built. That we felt were similar in scope to this project. Um. And we've got some pict- pictures here of different projects that we've built recently. Um, for different boards of education and. Um, at municipalities, this project here is in Morris County, New Jersey, and these are parking canopies. So on a parking lot. Um, this is actually, I think, at the library, so this is kind of, you know, gives you an idea of. How, how the parking canopies cover the parking lot, and cars are parked, if you can see here, under the canopies. This is also a very large canopy system here, built at the East Greenwich Board of Education. Um, also, um, this is their auxiliary parking lot, so they don't always have cars parked under it, but whenever they have. You know, meetings at the school and so on, and they need an extra parking lot, they do park under that canopy system. Um, this is the way it looks from. You know, from, from the sky, we had a helicopter fly over and photograph the site. The system is intended to be built with Trina solar panels. Um, selectria inverters, the long span canopy system would be a Quest Renewables. Um, steel system. Um. And the monitoring system is a locust energy monitoring system. We would be offering um, an educational component as well, so that we can. Um, offer the students in the local schools, whether it's the middle school or the high school. Um, online access to the system so that they can actually see. Energy being produced, where the energy is going, how many trees are being saved. Um, you know, and, and how much, you know, revenue is being sourced to the township and so on. And, and that's, students generally really do enjoy getting involved, especially when they can see. The solar system that's actually out there at the park, and they can kind of go back and, and get involved in school and see. Hands on, this is a real life system in our town, and this is really what it's, you know, how it's working and what it's doing. We also offer to sponsor um, a science fair. Well, again, at the middle school level or the high school level, where we would. Um. Sponsor all the costs of the science fair, we'd offer a stipend to the school to get it going. And um, we would offer a first, second, and third place prize for the most innovative renewables projects that students put together.
That's great.
Um, we're going to be installing four charging stations. Um. For car chargers. For um, the benefit of the residents, and all the revenues will flow directly to the town.
You, uh, sorry, Susan, can you just explain that part? When you talk about revenue flowing to the town, just so the public can understand. What that means?
So we will install the system at the parking lot. Um, under, you know, they will be under the canopy system. We will actually work together with you to find out where. You think, you know, sometimes people want charging stations. You know. In specific spots, because people park there for a lo- for, you know, a longer period of time to charge their cars, so there may be an opinion there. And the charging stations do have a revenue stream because. And the charging stations do have a revenue stream because people have to sign up on an app to, um, charge their cars and they pay a fee. That fee would go, flow directly to the township. HESP is just offering to put in the charging stations kind of as a gift to the town, um, in, you know, in conjunction with the solar system.
Excellent. And, and quickly, I'm sorry, I know you, you talked about this briefly, can you just explain to the, the public on the better, on the battery storage side? How that benefits the, the community?
Sure. So this project that we're building on, on, um, on, at the park, the park has, um, barely any load, there's really no electrical load that's going on there. So the benefits of this project will, the, the power is gonna be sold through Community Solar to the community residents at a very discounted rate. Now, when we put a, a battery system, when we attach a battery system to the, to the solar installation, um, because of the way that the battery enhances the solar, there will be, um, additional VITA credits that are paid for by NYSERDA that will benefit the residents on the Community Solar, through the Community Solar Program. So the program becomes very much enhanced by the battery system because the battery takes the power when it's very cheap to produce and it stores it, and then it benefits the system when the power is more expensive to produce. So we are able to take the benefit, the, the difference in the pricing of the power, which may be as much as, you know, ten cents a kilowatt hour in some hours of day and sometimes certain periods of the year. And that benefit will flow directly to the residents through the Community Solar Program. They will be buying the power at that much. They will benefit all of that varia- variation in price. So it's a tremendous benefit to the system and to the Community Solar Program, um, and, and we think it's just great.
Yeah, Councilman Patel has a question.
Okay, the, you know, this is, uh, you generate the power and feed the grid and charge a battery. If there is a power failure or massive power failure right in, in the town, battery storage power will be given to the town? Or this is just solely to whoever you buy and if you're signing, you get ten percent or whatever the discount? So there is no directly, power will be given to the town, those who are residents or anybody else surrounding, am I right?
So if, if you're asking me that if there's a power failure, would the battery storage system store to the benefit of the town residents, the answer is no, because the storage system is at the park. So it would technically, if the park had a load, um, the battery storage system would benefit that system, but because there is no load, there's no building at the, um, at the park, that, you know, there are other communities or other parks sometimes in different areas where, when you put a battery storage system on the municipal building, for example, and then there's a power failure, so then that battery storage system would feed the municipal building during a power failure. But that, but it can only, the battery can only work at the location where it is, where, where the solar system and the battery storage are located, and in this case, that's at the park, so the residents can benefit in that way during a power failure.
Could it power the lights?
It will power the lights.
But the battery storage, so if like, there's a power outage, right?
Right, it will be, uh, for the amount, for the amount of time that the ba- that the energy is stored, it will, it will give you two thousand kilowatt hours of stored energy.
Okay.
Power failure, yes.
Then, then there is another question, you know, the, the storage area, is there any environmental issue, you know? Any kind of a, uh, you know, the leak of the gas explosion, because these are all lithium or whatever kind of air you have, there is some risk of fire, right? So, you know, they're not, they're not the regular, uh, fire guys, uh, they are not training, trained to put this kind of fire off, they require a special kind of training.
So when we install the solar system and we install the battery system, we will work with the fire department, we do it on every solar system, even solar systems that don't have battery storage. We always meet with the fire department before we turn the system on to give them a brief education on where the shut off is and what, you know, where, where the power feeds, how it flows and so on. It's just a part of the protocol in all solar systems. I don't believe that there is additional risk with the battery and certainly will be a part of the education to the fire department. And any community, um, workers that work in the park, everybody will be a part of that initial um, education as to how the system works, where the shut off is, what to do in case of an emergency. And, um, we do that before we power the system.
But the land is very environmentally sensitive, you know, the DEC and, uh, o- all the water sheets and all that. If anything leaks out, you know what those chemicals are in the, in, uh, in the batteries? And if they go in a stream, then it's a big disaster, okay, the place like this.
I believe that they are very, very safe and built to.
No.
All the same.
Nothing is safe. They, they remember yesterday, the jet engine, seven, 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 the engine full of, you know, fell off? Nothing is safe, okay, you know, you have to invent something which can, you know, improve the safety, that's it, I'm not asking anymore.
Thank you, Councilman Patel.
Susan, Susan, could I ask a quick question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, where you have the proposed battery location, and this is basically for the public, cause I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer. You circled the area over by the basketball court. But I, I believe that has an arrow on it that will show that it's going behind the building with the blue roof? If you zoom in on, if, I don't know if you could zoom in on that?
Yeah, not sure if I can zoom in here either.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think that the specific location, um, I don't think that the battery storage needs to be where we specified it, so if you had an ask or you had a suggestion, we would be happy to work with you and, and put it in a place that you thought was better. I think we just felt that this location was kind of the center point between the two different arrays, the ground array and the canopy array. But it certainly is not fixed there by any stretch of the imagination. It's, it's very, at this point, that location could be moved if anybody had a re- you know, had any other suggestion, we'd be very eager to hear, you know, to hear what you thought.
Do you know the square footage?
Of the, of the battery storage system? I don't know it. No, I don't know the size.
You know, I, that's why the town would like the planning board to get involved with the placement, so site plans, so guys work with planning board.
Right, and that.
No, I, I was bringing it up for the public just cause you're showing it right where the basketball court is, and, and I see, I could see the arrow when I zoom in.
Okay.
My personal copy.
Yeah, I see it there also, but it's not fixed there, we can, we can, we can relocate that easily.
And the battery storage, is that, uh, going back to what, uh, Councilman Patel was saying, is that in a containment system?
Yes, yes.
So that protects the environment?
It's, it's, it's fully contained, yes.
Thank you, Susan. Do you want to continue with your presentation?
Sure. Um, so we were just talking about some of the different solar projects and the system and the educational component that we would like to offer to the students. We talked a little bit about the charging station, we were up to talking about the Community Solar Program. Um, so the energy that will be produced by the solar arrays will benefit the local residents of Yorktown through the New York State Community Solar Program, and HESP will coordinate, um, all of the community outreach as well as the subscriber management. We will be handling the entire, um, the, the entire scope of the Community Solar Project for Yorktown. We will bring in a Community Solar, we will introduce to Yorktown a Community Solar specialized team who will be your liaison, but I will stay involved in the entire process.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, let me just show you something. The best student from Yorktown High School, in two thousand and eleven, they won the prize, uh, in a national, uh, solar cell competition right here, okay?
Wow.
Yeah, and it said my name, the name after me, okay, that's right. And the second generation of the solar was invented right here at IBM in Yorktown, okay?
That's great.
We are so late to put the solar energy for public use. We are the bottom of the barrel of this country, the whole country, look, New Jersey has more than New York, you know? So we are waking up, so thank you.
Excellent. We're very excited about the project.
Thank you.
Excellent. Susan, thank you very much for your presentation. So at this point, what, what are you requesting of the town board? If, if there's, or Adam, if there, are there any other action that we have to take here?
Yeah, so we're, we're looking, I've been working with Adam on the draft of the lease agreement, um, which we're hoping, I think Adam is hoping to have approved tonight, um, for execution of the lease because, um, we need the lease executed in order to be able to apply to NYSERDA. Um, we, we have to, we have to immediately get two different applications out. One will be to, um, the, the utility for interconnection of the system, that's, that will be our first application out the door. And then the second will be with NYS- to NYSERDA so that we can lock in the incentive and work together with NYSERDA to get into the Community Solar Program and make sure we get maximum benefit to Yorktown residents.
Hey.
And, and who is going to do for alienation, uh, the paperwork? The, you guys do, or the town has to do it?
No, the town.
No, we, we have, we have to do that, and I, I sent a re- a dra- a draft resolution that, um, sets out the material terms of the lease, addresses the, it, it's also subject to a permissive referendum, so addresses the permissive referendum issue and the alienation issue for you, um, for all your consideration tonight.
Motion to authorize a supervisor to sign the lease agreement.
They're good.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Excellent.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Thank you, great project.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
When you, when you put this thing in the Yorktown, uh, uh, you know, the, the news or the spell the, what the HESP sells for, so the people know the whole, uh, you know, acronym, you know, what it stands for.
Uh, it's a long story, it doesn't really stand for anything.
Definitely thing.
For like IBM, you know, what it stands for, okay?
Okay, well, I'll give you some background on it, okay?
Thank you, Susan, we, we appreciate it.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night now.
Just as the IBM acronym says, it stands for Vishnu, I've been moved.
No, no, no.
There's other ones still, but we won't go there.
Anything.
Moved.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our next, uh, item on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Talbot, thank, thank you, Mr. Morano, appreciate you both.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for all your hard work on this project.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, so we're gonna go, um, let's see here, we're gonna go over, we, we have three separate conversations, uh, about overlay districts, uh, so we're gonna en- engage on this. Don't believe Joe Rena is in yet, is that correct, uh, Diana?
That is correct, I don't see him on yet.
Okay, so let's go, let's go with Darius. Um, and I know that he's got a proposed height amendment that he would like to discuss with the town board. All righty.
Oh, Darius isn't there.
Everything.
Oh, there he is, there he is. Excellent.
Darius, do you have other people on with you?
Hello, how are you? Sorry.
Hey, Darius.
Yeah.
We skipped ahead.
Oh, great. We're supposed to have, um, Matt Charmel, our engineer, and I think Tim Huddleston is gonna join from Oster, but I'm not sure.
Okay, I got both of them.
There's Tim.
Excellent. So we have, uh, Tim with us as well as, as well as, uh, Matt Charmel, right?
Good evening.
How are you?
Evening.
Evening.
Thank you both for joining us. Darius, why don't you talk to us again, uh, why don't you remind everyone who you're representing and, uh, and, and, and bring your proposal to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the town board, good evening. Thank you for taking the time tonight to, uh, listen to our project again. If you recall, uh, I guess it was now about a month ago to three, three weeks to a month ago, we presented our initial plan for the redevelopment of three thirty-five Downing Drive. This is the Kmart building. Um, Oster Properties has been the owner for some time. Uh, the plan is to remove the existing vacant Kmart building and construct a new structure which would include, um, residential and retail. Uh, the proposal, uh, that we planned to do would have retail on the bottom floor. Uh, we would have, uh, sort of a, uh, uh, gathering area in front, if you recall, we have, we do have a rendering of it, I think we can show if you want to see that again. And also, uh, have residential on three stories above. With that proposal, uh, we've been reviewing the code and the proposed floating zone, this is, uh, part of the, uh, overlay zone, excuse me. And, um, we did notice that the pro- the proposal was to limit the height of the building to three stories and forty feet uh, in height, with a number of other, uh, uh, proposed, uh, legal issues which were fine, um, including an FAR. So we looked at it and, and it was important for, uh, Oster to propose the four stories. Um, as you know, this is, uh, an old site that would take a lot of site work and a lot of upgrades to get it to the twenty-first century. And, um, with that, the, the, the thought was that the four stories would be what would be needed from an economic standpoint. Um, without the, the fourth story, we would only, we would lose essentially fifty percent, uh, fifty percent of the residential units would go from a hundred and fifty to a hundred units, I think my math is right there, um, on the percentages. Um, so we looked at it and we understand that at times, you know, large buildings in downtown areas could be looked at unfavorably by, um, residents and, and board members, but I think our property is unique. What we have here is a very large piece of property, I think it's, uh, fourteen point eight acres. So, uh, we were proposing to, to the supervisor and to the board here, could you consider allowing four stories and up to fifty-two feet, which would make this property a proposal and as of right construction, on properties only in excess of ten acres? That would limit its impact on the community, but also fall in line with the other, uh, areas of the development. One thing, for instance, I think you want to make sure that properties are not too, uh, condensed and too large for a piece of property, and that's why you have a proposed FAR, uh, for the, for the, for, for locations, and I believe it's point five five, if my uh, reading is correct, I have that up here. Yes, point five five. Our FAR would be well, well below that, I think in the range of point four two with the four stories and the fifty-two feet. So, Mr. Supervisor.
I saw you here, sir. Explain the people, not like me, but somebody else, what is the FAR? Floor area ratio, what is the formula to ordinary people, okay?
That's why I have Matt on, uh, the engineer.
Let me take care of that. Uh, good evening, everyone. So, so FAR, floor area ratio is a very common term in zoning, where a zoning ordinance sets a certain percentage of lot area to calculate how much building area that, that you're allowed to do. So in the case of, uh, the Oster site, which is fourteen point nine acres, that, that equates to about three hundred and fifty, call it three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand square feet. With an FAR of point five five, if we multiply, uh, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, we have fourteen point nine acres times roughly forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet per acre. Gives us a lot area of six hundred and forty-nine thousand square feet. If we're allowed point five five on the FAR, that means the total buildings on that site are allowed to be three hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. So, right now, the site has, um, a hu- in round numbers, a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of built between the uh, current Kmart building, which is ninety thousand square feet, as well as the, the supermarket, uh, building that's vacant currently in the two small retails. So when we demolish the, uh, Kmart, we'll be left with about ninety-five thousand square feet. And the building that we propose is, uh, two hundred and sixteen thousand square feet. So the ninety-five plus two sixteen. So the ninety-five plus two sixteen is about three hundred and eleven thousand square feet, which keeps us far below the three hundred and roughly three hundred and fifty thousand we'd be allowed. I, I, I know I ran through a lot of numbers. It can be a little bit complicated, but basically, based on the proposed ordinance for the overlay, our FAR, proposed floor area ratio, the total square footage of all the buildings is less than what, what the, uh, overlay would allow.
Wait, do you have, were you in? Okay, go ahead. You continue.
I just wanted to see if you had a rendering. It's, I'm sorry, Councilman. You can talk. This is one of those rendering. If you guys want to take a look at it again, if the board wants to see it. If we had that available.
You guys have that available?
May I share my screen and show that?
Yeah, yeah, man, absolutely. Please.
So, what I'm, what I'm showing right now is the proposed rendering of the four-story building, uh, that Darius has spoken about. And this was essentially constructed really in the same footprint of what the ninety thousand square foot Kmart building would be. So, the, the Kmart building, single-story, roughly ninety thousand square feet. This building, which will be U-shaped, will be four stories, but the outline of it will be half of that of the Kmart, fifty-four thousand square feet. And what we've done is by creating the U, and I think we spoke about this the last time you allowed us to join your hearing, was the center where I'm pointing right now would be a green space. Uh, and I actually have a floor plan that I'm gonna go find and show you. By the way, um, last time we met, there was a question about what the building would look like from the rear and from the roadway behind. Uh, so we developed this rendering, which we haven't shared with you yet, which shows, which demonstrates that we're using the same high-quality materials all the way around all four sides of the building. And the interesting thing here is the roadway is considerably higher than the grade below. So if you're on the road now, um, we should probably have a before picture that we can add at some time. You're looking down at the roof of the Kmart and the air conditioning units. Now, we've given you a beautiful facade to look at. And from up here, you can see, you only see the upper three stories unless you, you look at it at a certain angle. This rendering, which is not in color, is a little bit closer, but it shows you as you walk into the U, this plaza that we proposed to create with green space in the middle. It's another version of it. And just bear with me. I'm sorry, I'm scrolling through these. Still challenging on the laptop. We have a this is a, a floor plan of the first floor of the building. So, what I'm going around now is the U-shaped building I talked about. If you look at this as a rectangle, this is essentially approximately the same size as the Kmart. So as we demolish that Kmart, which by the way, has an expense, obviously, to demolish, we've created a one-way driveway around into the U, which creates a portico share at the main entry to the building, a plaza, green area in the middle. We have some retail scattered about on the first floor of the building, about six thousand square feet. And then we also have covered parking for the apartments above. We're hiding parking underneath the building. So, we, we've created essentially, uh, within the same footprint as the Kmart, this four-story building that we propose.
Questions from the board?
What is, what is the trade-off on retail space? How much was there and how much will remain?
It's a very good question. So, currently, currently the site is all retail at, at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand feet. We're demolishing ninety thousand feet and will add back in sixty-six hundred. So, uh, the, the site will be roughly ninety, just under ninety, uh, well, I'm sorry, just under a hundred thousand or about ninety-six thousand square feet of retail will be left where we had a hundred and eighty. So, we've cut the amount of retail space in half. But as, as I'm sure you're aware, most of it has been, uh, been vacant for some time.
Sure.
Can I ask? Can we?
Mr. Jamal, you finished with your, with your comment?
Um, I, I was, thank you, uh, Supervisor. Just one, one thought. I, I, I mentioned last time. One thing that as designers and urban planners that we talk about a lot is giving a gift to your retail is, is residential density. So unfortunately, because the world we live in, to some degree, you can look at it fortunately or unfortunately, retail spaces change significantly due to the internet. We have companies like Amazon that have really taken big box retail like Kmart's and, and hurt them significantly, put many of them out of business. So what do you do with that space? And, and what we're doing as a firm and what a lot of our uh, colleagues in the industry are doing is they're converting shopping centers to mixed-use developments where we're demolishing certain portions of the retail and replacing it with housing or multifamily housing in the, in this case. And what you're doing by doing that is one is you're not only dealing with, uh, providing a, a needed housing, because our population grows every day, but it's also providing customers for the remaining retail. So we say that the dense, the residential density is a gift to the, to the retail, so that one plays off the other and helps it significantly.
Did you anticipate my question?
Possibly. I, I, I think we, we spoke last time. We had some similar discussion.
Yeah, the question would, was going to be, is this the first remodel of one of the Oster shopping centers you're working on? And the second one, you already answered. Is this the wave of the future?
Well, I, I believe this is the wave of the future. I have been involved in, in renovations to some other Oster shopping centers. And candidly, those centers did not include the addition of, of multifamily housing, but they, they did transform what I'll call the retail into service space. And in most cases, uh, some of the retail was demolished or repurposed as service-oriented retail, like childcare centers, for example.
Okay, okay.
But I do have other clients where we are demolishing retail and, and building multifamily housing.
Well, it's like I told you the last time I gone over to Reader's Digest and I thought they did a great job over there.
Yes.
Yeah, the Reader Digest building up in, uh, Chaplain. Councilman Diana?
Uh, yeah, how many total units, uh, will there be at the completion of the whole? Um, residential units, I should say.
So, so we're in the four-story building, we're proposing three levels of residential. And that each level has fifty units for a total of a hundred and fifty units.
Okay.
And, and currently our plans call for a mixture of one and two-bedroom units, uh, where current plan shows eighty-four one-bedroom units and sixty-six two-bedroom units. And most developers and most communities like a combination of one and two-bedroom units because it provides housing for, we'll say, younger, younger professionals or younger couples that are just starting out, that don't necessarily need the extra bedrooms for, for children and for what we call empty nesters, uh, you know, adults whose children have moved out of their homes, but they want to stay in the community and down, and downsize. And one of the benefits of these buildings is not only are they providing housing for those two demographics, they do not really produce a lot of school-aged children, which a lot of communities prefer, like, because it doesn't, doesn't put a toll on your school system.
Right. The, um, the, do you have a, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Darn it. It, it was in my head and it just went, um, topographical map on, on, on what the, I know you, you're, you're, you're wanting a little relief to get an extra fifty, an extra, you want, you want to be able to go over and above what our, um,
Food, yeah.
The height requirement.
Height requirement is, correct?
Yeah, correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so now it's thirty-five feet, I believe?
I think it's proposed as forty.
Forty?
In the code.
And you want to go to fifty-eight?
Fifty-two, I think.
Fifty-two?
Let me just check the letter. Yeah, I think it's fifty-two. Yes.
Okay. Um, so, I guess on a topo map, what is the distance that you guys are down with, uh, from Route one eighteen? Do we, do you have, do you have that information? You may not have it at this point.
So I, I don't have it at my fingertips. It's cer- certainly something that we can provide for you.
Yeah.
But I, I would estimate that our finished first floor is easily fifteen feet plus or minus below the, below the roadway.
I mean, looking at the, looking at the one picture of the back rendering, it, that would have been my guess, but I didn't, I didn't know if you had actual numbers. Reason I'm saying this is Vishnu.
We do have a survey and that's cer- certainly something that we could provide. Um, but this rendering, uh, that you, that you, that I'm gonna put up, did use our, so this was not just its rendering. It is obviously done by an artist working with our office, but we provided what we'll call a, a building information model, a three-dimensional computer model, using the topography and the grades. And you can see, you know, we, we, we showed a garbage truck here, uh, you know, kind of showing that, that there's room for service vehicles. And that truck is probably about ten feet tall. And that's because it's significantly below the roadway.
Um, I believe the, there's only one building that's over, over height. Uh, Vishnu, you can probably back me up on this. Is the IBM?
Yeah, but it, it's a very different design.
Yeah, it's a different, it, it's a different design. There's, there's, uh,
And a hill and, uh,
It's built into a hillside. Yeah, there's three floors up and one terrace. So, okay, thank you. Alright, that's all the questions I had.
I had objections when I first saw it. It just, um, I didn't.
Uh, 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 let's say you are done. I like to speak at the end of something, you know? And, uh, that will involve in water sewer and, uh, and, uh, you know, the heights. There is no building this height in the town right now. Uh, because most of the buildings are three-story and then, you know, they have ground, floor, so first, second and a ground. Uh, terrace, first, second, and, and a third, like that, you know? So how, you know, I mean, this, this is a problem. And then, you know, can you explain to me? I have a question for the architect. Gentrification of suburb. Maybe you can explain that, that, that the word, I know what it is, you know? So, people, you know, people may not be able to leave here in this apartment. It's more, more expensive. And then, uh, if after it developed, it is even more expensive because more people will, uh, want to come here and leave. So that's another problem, you know? The energy, the water, the sewer, the traffic. There are people, those who are living here since fifty years, maybe, I live here forty-eight years, but a hundred years. They are looking for a sewer. They don't have it now. And you, you, you're gonna need the sewer. So all these things are people asking me, you know? And, uh, they have a concern, okay?
I think what Vishnu is trying to say is that the, 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 right now, the sewer infrastructure with the proposed, proposed projects that are out there, we'd be knocking on the door of our, uh, not of our plant limit, but of our permitted limit, um, with the additional, plus hopefully, we'll get the, uh, Halex Mills Sewer District put in there. So, we need to be in contact with the, uh, the DEP so that, uh, we can possibly get our permitted limit raised, so we avoid the fines and so forth of the, the, uh, and the problems that, uh, transpi- tr- transpire with over, overfilling, so to speak, our, our permit.
So if I, if I could speak to that and, and clearly, we are increasing sewage flow. But one of the things that green and sustainable design promotes is reuse of existing sites. So we have a ninety thousand square foot building here that's using sewage or was using sewage when it, when it was operating. Toilets, uh, uh, you know, wastewater associated with it, that's being demolished. So to some degree, and I'm not gonna tell you that a ninety thousand square foot retail building equals a hundred and fifty residential units. It certainly doesn't.
It absolutely doesn't.
But there would be a credit, yeah, but there would be a credit associated with ripping down that building and, and a, and a sewage flow that comes from that building. So that, that would be the first thing I would say to you, uh, in terms of sewage flow. The, projects like this also have a, a tremendous savings, we'll say, from a stormwater situation. So we're already dealing with a site that is almost two acres of impervious coverage. We're now taking about ninety thousand square feet, it's a little over two acres. We're, we're now taking that two-acre site, demolishing it and reducing the impervious coverage because we're, we're, uh, we're creating a green area within, within the space uh, to deal with that. So we're improving what I'll call the permeable area and, and the recharge of water right now. Where, where current stormwater regulations wouldn't require us, uh, to, we'll say, address stormwater because it's called a hundred percent the site or the area that we're talking about is a hundred percent impervious. It's probably gonna land up being something like eighty percent impervious. So we're, we're, we're improving the groundwater, uh, and stormwater cap- capabilities of the site. And then, uh, Councilman Patel asked me about the word gentrification, which sometimes can be a four-letter word depending on, depending on how it, how it's used. You know, in, in my mind, gentrification means ripping down and tearing away affordable housing and replacing in, in a, it's usually more in urban areas than a suburban town like Yorktown. But, but we'll say removing affordable housing and replacing it with luxury housing or housing that the local residents in a town or a community can't afford, which is pushing them out. We're certainly not pushing anybody out of Yorktown by building this, by building this building. What we're doing is we're making, we're making Yorktown more accessible, uh, possibly more affordable for people because these are rental units. They will not cost as much as a home. So I think that certainly you would not characterize, at least in my opinion, a project like this as being gent- as a gentrification type of project. Um, and, and, uh, in fact, I think it's the opposite of that. It, it, it's allowing and creating opportunities, even though obviously it's a, a for-profit project, but it is creating opportunities for more affordable housing than actually owning a home, which I think is, uh, probably, my understanding, the vast majority of your housing stock. I did also.
Something is very important, very, very important to me as well as, uh, many people, those who are right now, their childrens and, uh, and a policeman, a fireman, you know, the teachers. There was some housing allowance, you know, how many unit you build and, you know, affordable housing. That law does not exist in a town and it was demolition and the shame those who voted for that one. And that's what gentrification meant to me, that, you know, the purpose is to allow them to stand on their feet. And most of the people, they think that we don't have a place for the, our children or something like that. Every children is not lucky. You know, and the parents, because they have just, uh, you know, and, uh, so this is the kind of things people has a concern that, you know, you're building it, but how, they, they, you know, just, uh, they're on a key street. There is one new building here, you know? You need a BMW and Mercedes over there. You can't even get in there. So this is the problem of affordable housing issue is a very big issue. Even in the state, even in the country, you know, I mean, it's just a problem. We have to provide something to all, you know?
John, can I bring John to you real quick? Uh, John, just remind us one more time. The, the way the overlay district reads, it caps the, because I want to bring us back to what the focus of the conversation was. It caps the height at, at what?
Currently, the way the, um, section is written, it caps the height at forty feet and may not exceed three stories. So it's forty feet and three stories.
And so what, what these gentlemen are asking are for us to go from forty feet and three stories to four stories and fifty-two feet. So it's twelve feet.
From what's written, correct?
Right. And Mr. Supervisor, in limited scenarios, can properties in excess of ten, uh, acres?
Ten acres only or more. John, do you know by any chance how many, how many pieces of property within the proposed overlay district are ten acres or more?
I think three.
Three?
Uh, yeah, I haven't, I'm going from, you know, just visually,
Right.
looking at the map. So I think it's three, which would be the triangle, this property. Uh, we know the sound view is thirteen. Uh, the, the possibility is maybe Beaver Ridge, which is not in the overlay, might be capping around ten, but I think it's less than that.
Okay.
But only three.
So then in theory, it, this request or this amendment would only apply then to three, potentially apply to three properties?
That's correct.
Okay.
How about this of the, man?
If, if I may, uh, I apologize for interrupt. I just wanted to share. If, if I may, uh, I apologize for interrupt, I just wanted to share with you one other drawing, if I could for a moment.
Yeah, please.
So what I've shown here is an elevation of the building. And I just wanna kind of explain to you the height request and so on, so. Right now, we're proposing a, a floor to floor height on the first floor of the building. Of thirteen feet, and that's cause we're gonna have some retail spaces below, they wanna have a higher ceiling of about ten feet. And then we go to eleven feet floor to floor. And you'll note that the roof pitch starts at forty six feet, and I believe your ordinance uh measures roof height to the, to the middle. So um. We're, we're not significantly higher, although we're adding a, a floor, you know, in context to, to overall height. So the ridge of the roof is at fifty seven feet, but the uh, the roof actually pitched starts considerably lower than that. And one of the things that i- if you recall, we, we, we initially proposed the building with a, a flat roof. Uh and, and one of the things that was suggested and we agreed with, because we think from an aesthetic standpoint, it helps significantly. Is adding a sloped roof to that building. So obviously, it's a large building, so we don't have a full sloped roof. But what we have is a, what, what's really being displayed there to, to take on the look of a sloping roof, is a sloping parapet. And that screens all the mechanical equipment and every, everything behind it, but my, my point being is that the height isn't. Significantly higher uh than I think the intent of your overlay.
Any other uh comments from the board about the height amendment proposal?
When you look at the building from the back where one eighteen is. I don't know that, that, that it, it appears all that big, all that bigger um. I'm willing, let's talk about, um, you wanna put this in the, in the proposed code.
That's what they're requesting us to do.
Let's consider it, let's, let's talk about it, but there's so much, so much else, else in the code to talk about.
Yes, I know.
Okay, let me just, is there any flyer or, or, you know, any kind of a picture you have, is something just to. You know, computer generator, generator or even real balloon, something, you know? It just, just a little video, something, how it will fit in, what we have and what will be added to that, you know?
So I, I, I do have some renderings, but you know, I, I uh, I had previously shared, actually, let me. Let me find something else to share with you. Uh okay, here. So the rendering I have just put up. Shows the existing retail building, so where I'm kinda showing my cursor, this is our proposed facelift to the existing retail building that's there. Which is a single story building with a slightly sloping roof. And you can see that in the context of our proposed building, so there's sort of a main, what I'll call avenue or street that cuts through. In front of the storefronts. So you can see that, that what we're proposing is really not very far out of scale with the existing retail building in the, in the facade. Uh I'm sorry, within the, in the shopping center, cause it, it has higher roofs and higher sign bands. And, and this is just a, a refacing of what's there, we're not proposing to ma- to make it taller. That's, that's one uh aspect of, and then we have, you know, of course, what I showed you before. Showing you that it's not, it's not very high. Um I think one of the points that uh. Our attorney had pointed out when we spoke last time is, is the existing Kmart building and the existing bacon supermarket. Although they're single story buildings, they, they are approximately uh twenty feet in height. Because they're, they were high roofs, high roofed areas or high retail displays on the inside. Uh and that's, you know, a little, a little less than half of what, what we're proposing now in the multi-story building. Cause our floor to floor heights are so much less in, in residential.
What's the height of the current Kmart building? Just remind me.
Um. I don't know exactly, but, but I think we estimated that it was about uh, about twenty two feet.
That's with the, the straight facade without the architectural proposals that are.
Yeah, it's, just the big blank wall, flat blank wall.
Yep, I get it. Uh just trying to get, I think to Councilman Patel's point, just trying to get a reference as to, as to the height. Uh John, anything on your end? John Sagater, anything on your end about the proposed? Height amendment uh for ten acres or more?
Well, I think the ten acres or more is a uh. A good limiting factor. Not only because it limits the number, but I think it also limits the impact. Uh because it's on a more, you know, these things, if they occur, will be occurring on a more open site. And will not be close or next to, uh you know, uh traveled streets and sidewalks and things like that, so I think that's a mitigating factor. I also wanna remind board that the Capelli apartment project up in Folk on Barger Street. Uh that. Has a limitation of forty five feet and that. Regulation was modified for that project from forty to forty five. Uh by virtue of the fact that it is um built into a sloping hill. You will have the front part of it, i.e. the one that you can see from the ticonic, which probably will rival this height. And maybe even exceed it. Um so that is a, probably something that you could visit to get a sense of, of heights and. We can actually pull out the plans and tell you exactly what the heights are at different parts of that building. But you do have that um, that height currently close to in, in the town in that building. Secondly, um, the I two zone has a height requirement of forty, most of the commercial zones are thirty five. Uh the, the, the way this is written was rather modest in terms of giving flexibility in height, it was only going up about. Uh ten, five or ten feet. Um so those are things to also understand and know. Uh as I said, the RSP two is forty five and the RSP three has a height limitation of forty two. It's not out of um. Not unusual, uh we're not set at thirty five at three stories, basically is what I'm reminding you of.
How tall is the commerce, the building on Commerce Street?
Um, well, that is set down from the street, but I think that's probably. That's probably between thirty five and forty feet, Alice, I think, if you take it from the lowest point to the highest point.
Yeah.
Probably close to forty.
Yeah, I would think so.
And I just have to ask it, uh from, from the economics of the project, just to help the board understand. How pivotal or what, what, what role does this play in the economics of the project?
Yeah, I can briefly address that, Mr. Supervisor. What you have is, I sort of tried to mention it before, you have your site costs, you know, the demo costs, um upgrading, curving, paving. Utility upgrades, construction, safety measures, that doesn't change, whether you're building three stories or four stories, that, that's gonna be there. Um your other costs are gonna be there, your soft costs, and what it does, it really turns into an average. Of a, a unit cost, these are rough numbers, of about twenty to twenty five thousand dollars a unit. To upwards as, to as much as possibly forty thousand dollars a unit to build, if we don't have the fourth story. Um so it's a significant impact uh on the economics and. It impacts uh operating income, I'm trying to look at the numbers here, um. Will add twenty percent to the overall cost of the tri- of the pro- project um per unit. Also operations, um the cost of operating the smaller building when it's built is significantly higher, as much as six percent higher than the larger building. Given the economy of scale, so it, it, it is a significant impact, it does impact the sort of um. Profitability over the number of years that it costs, it takes to become profitable. Um by a number of years, uh we think, from, from our initial estimate. But in, in essence, the increase of cost per unit increases from about twenty five to could be as high as forty thousand dollars per unit.
Yeah. It almost doubles the cost.
Yeah, it could.
Okay. Any other questions for these gentlemen from the board?
Right now.
No.
Not right now.
We're gonna, we're gonna take your, your proposal and uh we'll discuss it. Uh as part of a larger conversation, I think that the board needs to have on, on the overlay districts.
Really appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night and be safe all.
Thank you all, thank you. Alright, we're gonna go over to, we have one more before we have a, a more broad discussion, uh we've got Joe Rena uh joining us. And Mr. Rena, you there?
Yes, hi everyone.
Good evening. We skipped over you, uh so we're coming back to you. So you have a, you have a, a proposed amendment that you sent to the board uh regarding the overlay districts. Uh why don't you describe that to the board and to, and for the public?
Correct, do you, uh, do you want me to go into a presentation of the project or just talk, get right to the point?
I think you can just, I think you can just go right to the point, I mean, everyone has received your letter, so I think we're familiar with that.
Okay, so um as we, as we stated in our letter, Jack Chow's presentation, uh proposal for the Gardena Hotel. Eighteen unit Gardena Hotel. Um it's situated in the C two R zone. Um the C two R allows for commercial use on the ground floor and residential. Uh above, two floors above. So in this case, though, the um hotel use does not fit in as a permitted use. Or a special use under the C two R zone. So we are asking the board to, to consider a code amendment to allow. Um allow this project to go, to move forward. Um as I stated in my letter, we have a few variants, we, variances we also have to get. And uh. You know, we've done a preliminary presentation to the planning board. Um we, we received some, some nice compliments on the, on the project. And so we're at the point now where. We need to know whether this is going to be possible from a legislative point of view. Um and allowed in, allowed in this zone, in this location.
Is, so other than, I don't know if John's still with, John, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so other, other than. What are, what are our options here in regards to this project? So we could either. It seems to me that we can either amend the C two R zone, but that would allow for this use townwide. Correct?
That's correct.
That, that could.
Now, I agree with, I agree with you, Councilwoman Roker, I don't, I don't think that's. I, I agree with you, it's okay, we're in agreement. Um. So what other options does the applicant have, other than the, he has the proposal for the overlay use? Which would limit it within the over, the confines of the overlay district? Um what other, what other options are available?
Well, you could rezone the property to um. I think the C three and C four allows hotel and motel uses by special permit. But the C three and C four obviously comes with a host of. Uh allowable uses that are not what you typically like to see in your downtown, so.
Right.
That's the other, that's the flip side or, or the.
Provide some examples of what those uses could potentially be?
Gas stations, warehouses, you know, things of that nature.
Thank you. Uh okay, so assuming we don't. Want to put ourselves in a position where those types of projects are in the, in the middle of the downtown. What other alternatives are at our disposal?
Well, it would be the, the rezone, it would be the text amendment in the C two, which you just discussed, and then it would be um. The ability to be reviewed and approved under the uh overlay district.
And uh Mr. Rena, in the overlay district, um did you have, refresh my memory, proposed specific language? Or is it just for use uh in, in the overlay district?
I don't think there's specific language in the overlay district from what I saw that refers to a hotel use. Um it would, it would have to be.
No, but in your proposal, did.
Oh, sorry.
In your proposal of, of amending the over, proposed overlay district to allow for this use. Uh would you cap, could we, would you, would you recommend capping it? Would you, how, how would you recommend we implement it?
Um, I, I mean, I, I think that's something for. A lengthy discussion and, and how you, how you, how you achieve that. Uh unit count, let's say, as compared to um. If it ended up on a larger parcel, you know, let's say, this is a, this is a third an acre, if it was on an acre parcel, you, you can get a bigger. Building on there, you can get more units in it. Um so. I, I, you know, I don't know where. Where the, the town would go with that or where they think they would wanna go. Uh maybe it's, it's a discussion I need to pursue a little further with John and kind of think it through and vet it out.
Well, I'm just thinking, what we just heard, I mean, if you, you know, applying it to a similar situation where it only applies to a. You know, three parcels or, or three pieces of property, you know, maybe is there, is there a way to filter out some of the others? I'm not sure. I'm just trying to get creative with it, if we can.
Well, I. Yeah, I, I think it would take some discussion, I don't know that um. I don't know how you would filter it out in the same way that. Uh. What we just discussed, the project before was filtered out by having a larger piece of property. This is, this is one of the smallest pieces of property uh in the district.
Right.
In the proposed district, so.
What was your first, uh, what was your first, Joe, what is the first thing, what did, what came to your mind? The first thing uh time you wanted to come before the board, what do you wanna do? Do you want us to rezone it or what?
At the top, at the, our first pre- presentation, we were asking for a code amendment to allow. Um to allow this use in the C two R zone. Now, I, I, I assume that can be done and it with, with some type of measure added to it. As far as, uh but I, but I think that's, you know, that's, that's a. You know, a formula that's gonna have to be discussed.
Yeah.
You know, that, that could be done in, 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 in the uh text of a code amendment. Um certainly, the, the idea of being in the overlay is, is attractive to me because. It would essentially be one stop shopping in the sense, we, we would go to the planning board. And they would have the jurisdiction to grant the variances as well as um, you know, approve the project, so that would. That would, you know, make the process for me a lot easier for, for my client. Um but again, you know, if, if you were to do that. You know, I, 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 I'm, I'm sure you are gonna wanna have some type of measure in there as to how many units are gonna be permitted. So um, you know, that's not something I think we can hash out tonight, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But uh, you know, we'd have to discuss that.
Yeah. So I'm your, Councilman Diana, you're muted.
Joe, just.
Councilman Diana, you're muted.
Joe, just a quick question, um.
Yeah.
That, i- is, that's gonna be a total teardown, correct? On that particular unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, what the board needs to decide is we're gonna do a text amendment to the C two R, which would again, apply townwide, or if we wanted to find. Some way of including it within the parameters of the overlay district. That's, that's, those seem to be our two options, is there any other option? Hearing none, I guess there's no other option.
Yeah.
Struggle to find one.
Now, those, the only two, and the only other thing is transitional, but it's not in, in the area where it could be a transitional.
Right.
Yeah, you could, you could, the other thing you could do is you, the only other thing that I can think of is you could write another special permit section for. Quote unquote boutique hotel. But again, it would need to be applied to the C two, which would then apply to all of the properties in town. Um you know, that's a, that's a much heavier lift since. You know, it's a whole nother section of law. Um so. You could all, you know, there's also the, and I haven't looked at the lately, the hotel and motel special permit. Maybe that could be modified in a, in a manner uh that puts limitations, I don't, um. Uh you know, in terms of its bulk. And where it can be located, um but that would be something to think about.
But couldn't you just do the same thing within the overlay district?
Yes.
And with, with the overlay district. Um. Being that it's for the heights area. I, I mean, how many, how many parcels are there really available, John, that this could apply to in the heights area? I, I. I guess what, Kear Street is C two R and.
Yes, Kear Street and Underhill is C two R. Um Commerce Street is mostly C. Yes, Kear Street and Underhill is C two R. Um, Commerce Street is mostly C two R. You know, you never know. I mean, there, there could be a couple. I, 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 it's, it's hard to expect that you would. Um, but.
How large is your parcel, Joe?
Third of an acre, you said.
A third of an acre. Okay.
So you can't do it by size?
No.
Um. I, I don't know. I guess, uh, I guess the only thing I could suggest is that John and I, uh, you know, get into a conversation about it and see if we could kick around some ideas and and come up with a way to, uh, to do it. Um.
I mean, if you, if you.
I, is there a way under the, under the overlay that it's a case by case?
Could you do a special permit through, to be considered within the Heights overlay district?
So that it's reviewed case by case?
Well, they're going, all of these projects may be reviewed case by case anyway. But, uh, you could, you could, within the overlay district language, allow something like this that has to comply with the special permit section for hotel and motel.
Mm-hmm.
So that's one way. And maybe you have to modify that section of code to capture some of the limiting factors that you think or develop that would make sense, if any.
Yeah, because you wouldn't want, you wouldn't want the regular, um, verbiage for a hotel motel there because I believe it allows for more rooms.
Right.
Right. Currently it does. I mean, you could, you could supplement that with, you know, a definition of a boutique hotel, which is, you know, certain number of rooms or less and, you know, develop some of those, those limiting factors.
I kind of like that. I kind of like that angle.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that, that seems to make sense to me as well, considering the options.
Hmm.
So, so with that said, couldn't, couldn't under the overlay district, um, put in boutique hotels and then just define what boutique hotels are, would be considered? Without, without amending, without, without getting into amending the, the the zoning code on, on hotel and motels.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. Uh, I think the short answer is yes. Um, but I think it would be dependent upon how the, how that section and that description and what those limiting requirements are, how broad, you know, how, how much of there is that we develop, right? If it becomes a lot of verbiage, then maybe you drop in a special permit section, uh, and, and point to that from the overlay district.
Okay.
But, but yes, the short answer is, Joe, if we can capture the limiting factors within the overlay district without spending too much real estate on the page for that one single use, I think it's, I think it's possible. If you're using up too much, you know, of that section of law, then I, I, I think it starts to make less sense depending on what, what develops out of it.
What, what would be some of the factors that you would include in there?
Well, I think it would be the number of rooms. I think you might talk about, you know, uh, what can go in the hotel, you know, whether you can have a cafe and a bar or no bar and just cafe, you know, there's a whole host of things that you can think of. I know that they're planning a bar, so, you know. Um, you know, there's plenty of stuff. You could, uh, actually look at boutique hotels and understand how they're parked. It may be different from what we already have in terms of the hotel and motel. And that may be a different, um, situation. And then of course, if they have a certain parking requirement that makes sense, you might establish some rules upon which that can be varied if there is parking nearby that has certain parameters and within a certain situation. Because I know that this, this property may need something like that as well. There's a number of things that you have to think about relative to the property if you're going to write specifically to it.
How would, how would the.
Or I should say specifically to boutique hotel.
How would the board feel of amendments, uh, as John has now started, let him go and noodle that around a little bit with his team and, and bring back?
That, that's probably the best, uh, alternative there.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Let, well, it's definitely going to take some brainstorming, I think.
Right, right. I, I know, I agree, but I, but I think we're all in agreement that we don't want it in all C two R zones across town, right? I think that's.
Right.
Check box. Um, we're, we're not, we're not, it doesn't sound like the, the, you know, the rezone to a C three or C four.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't hear much support for that. Uh, so it leaves us with only limited options from a special use, creating a special use permit for the overlay or just ins, or just inserting language that permits boutique hotels, that recognizes and understands boutique hotels within the overlay district for the Heights hamlet. Again, just the Heights hamlet. So it limits that. It limits where they could be. And it also would limit their size and so on and so forth.
Right. And it, and once you did develop the, the, um, method and the language, you could apply that to some of the other development districts that you may be working on. That makes sense.
I agree.
I agree. Okay. So that's, that's the direction we're going to give John. Are we, is the board comfortable with that?
Yep, I am.
Yep, I think so.
Okay. Very good.
So just so I can report back to my client, Owee, is this a steep hill we're climbing here with this or?
It's a hill. It's a hill.
It's a, it's a hill.
It just flattened a little bit, but.
No, it's still a hill. Let's not give him any, any false hope.
Yeah.
It's a hill. It's a hill.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I, he's, he's, I'm sure he's going to want to know how far down the road he wants to chase this. So, okay.
We're working on it. That's for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. I'll, I'll catch up.
Night, Joe.
Night, Joe. All right. So we're going to end with a conversation, a more broad conversation. I know that, uh, we've, that we've taken some comments and feedback. John's worked on some more amendments for the board to consider. John, and do you and Robin want to present those?
Sure.
Before he says anything, can I just say something?
Of course.
I think it's, I think it's good that we, we've listened to, um, people who, who want us to amend the overlay district. I think that that's nothing abnormal. It's normal. Um, and, um, now, uh, let's get into what we got here.
Okay. John and Robin, take it away.
Okay. I'm going to start by talking about, um, there's been some discussion and I was asked to modify the language in this law, uh, pursuant to, uh, who makes the authorization to allow a particular property or project to be, um, reviewed and approved under the district. So the discussion was that possibly it is a better, um, fit for what we're doing here in order to have each applicant within the districts, however there may be, many, there may be, to come to the town board first to get a conceptual review and a, a good understanding of what the parameters of the project are and have the town board decide and make a determination as to whether or not it should be able to be considered and authorized to be reviewed and approved by the planning board under the overlay district parameters. So I wrote, uh, and if you recall, there was a section, uh, under authorization, which is three hundred dash two fifty-one. There was a section that basically said, the applicant has to come and they have to have a written, they have to give a written statement of why they think that they belong or makes sense in the, in the district, and that goes to the planning board. Planning board decides whether or not it makes sense or not. Um, I've re, retooled that, um, to have it come to the town board first.
Mm-hmm.
Same written request for authorization to set out all the parameters that they claim makes sense, uh, to be in the overlay district, why they fit into the overlay district. Presentation to you with plans and documents that show the parameters and that the, um, impacts or potential impacts of the project, uh, at which point you will make some determinations. And I've listed eight, um, benchmarks that you will decide upon, um, that allows them or, or helps you in making your determination and your authorization. Now, it, it goes on to say that you, you don't have to find all of those to be a one hundred percent true, but you're.
Why don't you, why don't you say what the eight are?
But it gives you, gives you a, a litmus test of the parameters of the project. So.
What are the eight?
Uh, I'll give you the eight. So it says, the town boards shall make a determination to authorize the project for consideration under the overlay district after making the following determinations. Number one, the project is consistent with the general goals of the comprehensive plan. Or two, that the project will not likely be detrimental to the character of its immediate neighboring properties or the district and town at large.
Mm-hmm.
Number three, that the scope of the project will not likely cause operational difficulties on the site that have potential to negatively affect the health, safety and welfare of public. Number four, that the town's infrastructure is capable of servicing the project or that the impacts or deficiencies of the infrastructure can be appropriately mitigated. Number five, that the project will eliminate a blight or potential blight within the district. Number six, that the project is consistent with the goals and intent of the overlay district. Number seven, that the project is consistent with the requirements of the overlay district and does not exceed the limitations or requirements set forth therein. And eight, that the project is likely to contribute to the economic development of the district and the town at large. So those are the attributes that you would sort of make a litmus test for each project that comes. Um, and, and so once, if you do authorize it, then you refer it to the planning board for their normal review as they would any other site plan or subdivision, except it would be under the overlay district and they would have some latitude in some of the bulk requirements which you already know about.
Right. And this is, I think, one of the things that we've heard from the members of the public as we've gone through this journey. And this is why we appreciate their feedback and their, uh, and their commentary because we want to make sure that we get it right. And these are good amendments, John, and I want to thank you for taking them up.
Okay. And then I would also, and maybe since if Robin feels, um, well versed in it, she can take us through some of the um, stuff that you haven't seen that we added, um, regarding the Osceola overlay.
Great.
Uh, in particular, I think the most important ones are what the permitted main uses are and accessory uses. So if Robin wants to do that, do you have that handy?
Um, scrolling down now. Uh, your pages aren't numbered.
Oh, that's right. You're right.
Well, it's section three hundred dash two fifty-six.
Yes. Um, right. So permitted main uses is letter A. Um, started obviously number one with the permitted uses in the underlying zone. Um, the underlying zone is country commercial, um, most of the properties, um, and some C two. Uh, the same main uses permitted in the commercial recreation zone. We thought that was appropriate, obviously because of the lake.
Uh-huh.
Uh, multi-use developments, multi-family residential development, the live-work unit development, and then, um, stores, shops, retail businesses. That is all what's allowed in C two. Um, regular, you know, restaurants, offices.
That's already, you said there's already C two pieces over in that district.
There's some C two there.
On Hill Boulevard, right?
I guess. So just, you know, a note on the CR, which is the commercial recreation, uh, as you call, uh, there's been plenty of discussion about that area. And there was some commercial recre, in fact, a lot of the, um, properties that, uh, were on the shoreline of the lake were originally, uh, zoned commercial recreations. Not all of them, but a number of them were, including that what we know as the Osceola Beach. So in the comprehensive plan and a little lot of discussions after that, we have looked at Lake Osceola as an opportunity for more entertainment, uh, type uses. So that's why we thought that is a key, uh, set of uses that should be in there. First of all, it preserves the Osceola Beach and other, uh, older uses that were there. There, some of there are defunct right now, but certainly they can come back. Uh, it allows restaurants, uh, things like that. So if you imagine, you know, the, the resource, the beautiful resource of the lake, having some restaurants and some, you know, outdoor and indoor recreation opportunities, I think that is, um, something that, that area would lend very nicely to. That's why we added that in. And, and just, there's, there's other things in there and I don't think we need to go through them because a lot of them are modeled what you've seen before in New York and Heights District. It has unique buildings. Um, there's an old, um, residential structure up there that has a number of apartments in it now. It's a green building. It's on the north side. That was a hotel at one time back in history. Uh, so that is identified as one of the unique buildings, uh, as is the Lord's Building, you know, the Bifford Building. So it, it replicates what, what you've seen before. So I, I really just wanted to talk about kind of the meat and potatoes and kind of the larger issues that we had added in. Uh, if you want to take a look at the maps right now of both of those areas, we can do that. You want to do it, Robin?
Yeah. I have a lot of screens open.
There's screen, like other things pop up. Hadn't been a bunch of times.
Well, I don't want to do that, so. Since we're on Osceola, I'll, I'll go there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is the, uh, commercial area around the lake. Basically, we had gone over this before, um, that we started from, um, where six N breaks off. Um, this is where the battery energy storage was approved. Um, uh, all the way, these are all country commercial properties around the lake and the, um, first, the frontage of all the commercial properties, the north side of Route, of East Main Street. Um, and then on downhill Boulevard where we have the commer, the bowling alley and the new shopping center and the Lourdes Shopping Center. Um, and then the Caremount Medical Building and the other medical building complexes on this side of Hill Boulevard.
I still have a problem. Um, my problem is that I think there is a resident.
One here.
Like in that area. And if we could put the Underhill side on that, on the, in the under, in the overlay district, why not that side?
Don, can you, can you explain to us if there's, is there a difference? I mean, if we're using this, if we're using, I want to make sure that it's, it's, the same standards are applying. So if.
Not.
Can, can you walk me through that?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Um, okay. So the question is, what are the difference between the actual properties? Or, or the, or the districts?
Well, I mean, obviously the, you know, the Underhill Avenue property has gotten, uh, quite a bit of attention.
Yeah.
So if that is in the zone, Councilman Roker is raising another piece of property in the Osceola district.
No, yeah. And he knows what property I'm raising.
Yeah. The Summit Hill, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So in terms of the properties, uh, you know, I'm not going to talk about the, the, uh, physical differences. I don't think we need to do that, right? I, I can if you'd like.
No, no, we don't. We don't have.
But in terms, in terms of usage, they, they were similarly offered for residential, uh, multifamily. Now, prior to, uh, the effort here of creating overlay zones, the summit, what was called the Summit Hill property in, uh, Lake Osceola area was in for multifamily and they were asking for a rezone to, because it's, it's zoned single family and they're going to R three.
Mm-hmm.
Now.
That's which, and this is the R one twenty that you see on the map.
Yes, yeah. Where the cursor is.
Okay.
The, the, it's got like a dog leg, right? So, um, the, the Underhill Farms property, which is a sound, sound view, also offered for apartments and we have, of course, as. Also offered for apartments and we have, of course, as I said before in discussions. Prior to the, uh, current owner coming in, we had had inquiries. In years past for other multifamily projects there, nothing came to fruition, it was just discussion, but nevertheless. It is also a property that seems to attract, um, given its location and also in today's market. Other multifamily, um, projects. Had there not been the action to create overlay districts. I think that you would see the Soundview property being, uh, proposed for a rezone to some type of R three or multifamily, so. So I think they're similar in that regard, if that's basically what the question is.
That was the question.
But that that is a problem with the sewer, right? That's another thing. Big problem?
Well, the, this.
That's not the town's.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm I'm trying to understand the standards that have been used to put one piece of property in one district. And if we're going to use standards. They should, it would, they could apply, and and so I'm just trying to understand. So that the board can make a decision, if it wants to make a decision. But I think when we're making these decisions, there has to be a uniform, uniform standards that we're, that we're applying when looking at these pieces of property.
Right.
That's my, that's my point of view.
Right, and so just further, further along a little bit, so the position of both of the properties.
Yes.
Is near.
Would you consider this a transitional zone?
This could be, this could be considered transitional zone, yes.
Okay, so. In that case, in that case, and I'm not talking about the projects, I can't, I don't, no. I'm looking at the actual piece of property, okay? So in this case. It's, it's similar in the, in the sense that it borders the sea, the the commercial corridor. Right, and like you talked about with Soundview, with Soundview, with the, yeah, with Soundview. That goes from a commercial corridor out, so does this provide the same? Si- is that, is that a si- is you you view this as our planner, do you view this in your experience, do you view this in the same manner?
I view this in the same manner, so. This, this property, meaning the Lake Osceola property, is bordered on a commercial. Bordered by commercial properties, in this case on both sides. Of it, on one side across the street, it's, uh, it's bordered by other, um, uh, residential properties, but the point is, is that. It's difficult to, um, to, um. Develop this property according to its underlying zoning. Right, it's a single family art underlying zoning, right, so that that's a, that's a hard sell for this property. And and possibly not even desirable from the standpoint of the town by virtue of its location, the street that it fronts on, so on and so. I would say that that description is similar to the Soundview property.
Mm-hmm.
The, the only difference is, if you want to kind of split the hairs on it and be very, very detailed, is that on one side. Soundview fronts and butts up against commercial. Properties. It is on a heavily traveled road, two of them. But on the other backside of it, it is bordered by single family. That is like this property, the Summit Hill. This exact, um, description that the transitional zone anticipates. Where you have a piece of property that has, um, some, uh, disability in being. Uh, developed under the zone that it is in, in this, in both cases, single family. Um, because of their location, because of their proximity to the, you know, um, diff- differing uses. Differing classes of uses, in in this case, you know, the commercial. Uh, and also to a, to a certain extent of the, of the types of roads that it fronts on, so. I think, I think in terms of considering either one of these from, as transitional zones, I think they fit very well. And I will go on to say that I think that there's been some uses of the transitional zone that have been less clear. So.
So in that, in that instance, I'm just talking it through with you. Uh, in that instance. Would we be made, would we essentially be saying potential transitional zones should be included in overlay districts?
That's one, that's one way to put it, yes, that that's a consideration, I mean, I think that helps you describe. The, describe the difficulties that that pro- that property. Uh, exhibits.
Uh-huh.
The fact that it can be, that that it does fit into a transi- transitional zone, it tells you something.
Uh, can I just say one word, you know, sometime people used to say appropriate. Things at appropriate place, is this a fits into the transition or overlay or altogether combination?
Okay, so if you, if you're going to ask me, uh, my opinion, uh, if we're talking about. The Osceola property, the Summit Hill, uh, I believe that it is. It is a, a good candidate for the overlay district, I think we just talked about the transitional. The reason I say that is because, as I said before, we've looked at Lake Osceola as a property for, for instance, uh, as an area. To be leveraged for recreation, for like family entertainment and things of that nature. This property is right next door to a big gym.
Right.
They have pool, they have all sorts of activities, so that's the starting point, on the other side, you have a historical. Um, use structure that is for, um, entertainment, there was, there is the, um. Fuela Manor, which I think is closed, but nevertheless, it operated for a long time as a restaurant. That was there as Nino's, it preceded that as the Maple, like I think Maple something brother. Uh, you had the little hotel there, so I think this, this fits into that, the Summit Hill property could certainly be looked at for. Outdoor recreational uses, so I think that it fits into, uh, what we're doing here in terms of the overlay district, and of course. It could then avail itself of some of the other uses that are allowed in in both the zones that we're talking about. I think the same. The same goes for the Soundview property. I don't want to over describe.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Got you.
Throw it to the board.
I think we should include it in there. If we have one property that's similar to another and or can be described as the same. I'm not sure why we let one in and and keep one out.
Tend to agree with Councilwoman Roker.
Okay. Other, any, any other comments on it?
I think that, I I I do think that that, that. With the Jefferson Valley property, that it does hold a special area over there with the size of the roads and so on and so forth. And and the amount of volume they want to put into that area, so, I mean, special consideration has to be made for that. Such as the number of units, et cetera.
Well, I would say the same for, um, Underhill Farms.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What's good for the goose, it's good for the gander.
Well put, Alice.
It's good for the town is good for the town.
It's good for the town, it's good for the town.
Well, then, does the board want to include that, so the board wants to include this in. In the Osceola District. Since it's, the way that it's described by John as, as a similar transitional zone.
Yeah, it, it seems the appropriate thing to do.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Supervisor and a board member, are you asking me or the entire board that are you going to do it tonight like this?
Yeah.
Okay, ah, no.
I'm asking your opinion.
Yeah, no, opinion is a different, sorry, I'm listening, appropriate thing and appropriate place. Uh, I got some answer from John. You know, I got these, uh, longer sixteen pages, I haven't read it yet because. Uh, there was a little things, I had to take a break and the computer, I had a little trouble with my keyboard or something. Or maybe I pushed something, but I don't know why I got lose something, but I have to read that one, and I have a four hundred plus email in two, three couple days. So I want to make sure that I, I understand what's going on. You know, and, uh, progress with preservation.
What I've said, Vishnu, let me explain my request, I don't think I'm asking for anything. Different than what is already in an overlay zone. The property. Known as the Beaver Conference Farm has been put in an overlay zone in Yorktown Heights.
Not yet.
Well, tha- that's proposed, okay? And so what my, my question to the board is, this, this other property is very similar. To, to, um, the Beaver Conference Farm property, if one goes in it, why don't you put the other one in it?
So if we were going to make this a, take this into the overlay zone, just looking at. East Main Street is a dividing. Would we just take the R one twenty? And just, and that's where we'd make our, our, our. Black line, so to speak?
Yeah, we would, yes, yep. Exactly. Yes. And again, uh, you know, if you continue. If you continue along the line that we've just established with each applicant coming to the town board. You would make the determination on whatever the proposed use. Will be made for consideration under the overlay district for that property and any other.
Because this, looking towards, if you look at the R three on top. That's where, uh, Coachin Four is, I believe, right?
That's right, yep.
Yep. And then down here is, uh, um, Surri, Surri Court, yeah.
Correct.
There are three.
Yes.
Okay.
What's the point?
No, I'm, 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 I'm just, uh, I'm trying to wrap my head around what other plans are going on for this R one twenty area. Other than. Let's say what they have at Coachin Four.
Coachin Four are a little different, don't you think?
Well, that's just like, kind of like apartment buildings.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's a lot different than what was presented.
Well, they'd be apartment buildings up in there too, they weren't just going to build duplexes, you know, it was, it was, uh.
You know, I am not even, uh. Sitting here saying that there is a proposal for that, we know it's not right here right now, but what I'm saying is that. If we define. Parcels that we would like to see development on, um, you got. And you, and they're, and they're both similar, you can't say to one, well, you get to do this and you get to, and the other, you get to do this. It's not, it's not right, it's not fair. Um, and don't tell me that we could not put. Any kind of stipulations on the size, you know, you, we talk about the Underhill Farms. That's a hundred and fifty apartments, sim- similar to what we were offered on this property.
Matt, did any of those other uses come through with, uh, uh, the Hill property by chance? Any, any more interest?
I, no, I have not heard from anybody on it.
Okay.
I would just offer that perhaps the way it's zoned now has not worked. And the, you know, Summit Hill that was proposed was thought of as possibly too much there, but. You know, they've, Catherine Honig, the owner, has tried to get commercial there, it's a large per-. Property and people aren't really building that right now, so maybe the possible consideration that mixed use could happen here. If you authorize it is a possibility.
I, 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 okay, but you cannot say because people didn't like the number of units. People don't like the number of units at Underhill Farms either.
Hmm.
That's true.
Can I?
What's the difference?
Can I, um, read to you what it says about the property from the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's po- policy four dash five six. And it says, the vacant site between Lee Boulevard and Hill Boulevard shopping areas. Should be analyzed in a more detailed process such as a site planning process. To ascertain the use or mix of uses that is appropriate to and complements the uniqueness of the Jefferson Valley Hamlet. So, and it, you know, goes on with another small paragraph that I'm not going to read, but basically, the comprehensive plan anticipated that. It's a unique, uniquely located and unique property and it will take some evaluation. And some process to figure out what is just right for it, so.
But I could tell you the same thing for the other property, you see, we, we get to the same conclusion, um, and I would agree with you on the study. But the problem is, the town of Yorktown for the past, how many, how old is the comp plan?
Ten years.
For ten years, have never looked at it, never considered a study, so, you know, so the idea that we're going to look at it now.
Oh, yeah, I I understand that, I'm, when I'm not suggesting that you do a study. What I'm suggesting is that the, the overlay district can be used similarly. To go through a process in which you evaluate and come up with. The best and use for the property, the best project. So in other words, you know, these folks, if you, if we're continuing along the line that we outlined before about coming to the town board. That is a vetting process that you can go through.
Mm-hmm.
And it won't be taking, won't be taking somebody down a long pathway and then saying, you know what, after you've done all this work, we don't think so. They'll come to you with the concept plans.
It makes a lot of sense.
You know, so, so I'm sort of saying that, uh, it's in the comprehensive plan identifying the project as having unique qualities. And I think that the overlay district can suffice as what they were saying in it. That's the wrong word, but.
So basically, all, all overlay, it, to, to say all overlay district area. Should be, um. Uh, on a case by case basis would, would, would be fair.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
Well, that, that's what, that's what I've been asked to write in, in that, what we described earlier.
Yeah.
So that the, now the process, it would come before the town board under the proposal. The town board would have to authorize it. To go to the planning board under the parameters of the overlay district, and there are specific, there are eight, right, John, eight?
Eight.
Eight criteria that the town board would make that, that evaluation on, one of which was the, was the comprehensive plan. So, it, it, it sounded like. Again, looking at the transitional zone properties in the Heights and in Osceola. We real, you know, I I tend to agree with Councilwoman Roker, you have to treat them equally.
Yeah. What in that, in that, in that overlay zone, what, if you follow Hill Boulevard up to where that C two is diagonally across from that. But it, what, what is that 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 it got put into the overlay zone? Is that that, is that a little professional building right there, is that, is that that corner I'm thinking of?
No, I think the professional building is straight across the street.
Yeah, the other side.
That's it, right there, right.
Right there.
This is a wall, isn't it?
There, I think. What the heck is there?
I think that's vacant.
Okay.
It's just commercially zoned.
It's commercially zoned, it's vacant, you know.
Okay. I was looking, I'm going, what the heck?
It's not much of anything, Tom.
No, then I wasn't wrong.
Yeah.
No, and if you, if you want to keep it on the south side of East Main.
Right.
You just knock this off.
Right. Use East Main as your border there and drop it down.
Right.
But that is a C two on that little corner, that's interesting. Or a, a commercial zone, I think, so.
Right.
Yes.
Very interesting.
I, I think that's really what the town board has to make a, kind of grapple with and make a decision on, is, is the standard by which we're going to. Apply the overlay districts to properties. And it seems to make sense to me, quite frankly, if we're going to use one litmus test on that transitional zone characterization. It, it seems sense, makes sense to use it for, for this as well.
And giving people the opportunity to come to you with something. And giving people the opportunity to come to you with something interesting. That's kind of the whole point of the overlay zone.
Exactly. Right, and it doesn't have to be what was once proposed. I mean, that's...
Absolutely, absolutely.
It could be something completely different and completely new and, and who knows? But zoning does restrict what those potential projects are.
You know, what's, what's upsetting is that there are a lot of zones, um, where you've got a, a residential, supposedly a residential aspect, which should have never been the zone, should have never been put in, in those particular zones. There was a point in the last comp plan where everybody was just given, uh, 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 rezoning by, let's make it a, let's upzone it. And I thought that was unfair then, and I think it's unfair now.
Correct, so, Councilman Lachterman, uh, any other thoughts?
Uh, like I said, I, I agree with Councilman Roker. I think that, uh, it makes sense. I, I, and Robin's best point also was that it opens the door for new and innovative ideas to come in. And, uh, you know, that's what this is all about, and I think...
Exactly right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we, we have to keep that in mind and, um, you know, right now, we've been seeing, you know, as far as I recall, any plan that's been there has sort of been a, a regurgitation and reiteration of, of one thing after another.
Right.
Uh, and, and this may be a way to really, you know, broaden the, uh, the outlook on it.
Okay, any other comments from the board? On this?
Alles klar.
What's that?
What?
Alles klar in German. Right?
So, do you want us?
In Danke.
Do you have instruction for us, or are you reserving?
Well, I think, I think the board is, I think at least the majority of the board is in agreement that
Yeah.
that it should be put in.
Okay.
Yeah, it's little too early, let me digest it, you know, don't count on me right away. Are we doing something tonight?
No.
Trying to give them direction.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, John, on, i- if, let's just say we took the R one twenty, we put that in the overlay zone, and just continued that whole C one and C two and stuff, would that change that designation for argument's sake? Uh, you know, to an overlay or, because let's say something happened to the Chico's Market there and they wanted to put housing there? Like they do with the Jeffs, uh, the, yeah, at the, uh, Yorktown Green.
Yep. So now... Go ahead.
No, so if that was, if it was that particular quadrant was put in the, the whole thing, well, other than the four or five houses that are there along East Main Street, um, if that was put into the overlay zone, if something occurred where, like I said, the Chicos went out and they decided they wanted to put three-story building there for housing and bottom would be retail.
Yeah.
Like they do in New Yorktown Green.
Yeah.
This way, we wouldn't have to go back and revisit that. And it already is commercial. So it would be a tweak, so to speak.
So, the question is whether, if it goes into the overlay district, that is a positive because it anticipates a potential, uh, scenario similar to what happened to Kmart, right? Is that...
Correct, that, that, just as a, just, just spitballing on it, you know, just...
Yeah, uh, essentially, let's not forget, what you're doing here when, with these overlay districts is essentially, it is a rezone because you're, are changing allowable uses, you're adding allowable uses, you're establishing bulk requirements, so it is a rezone. The way you look at it. So if you extended it over there, uh, those properties would then have additionally, uh, you know, new uses that would be allowed. Uh, they would have a new process under which they could, uh, realize those uses. And they would have another set of, um, bulk requirements that they, um, could look at. And they're more flexible, so the answer is yes. I will tell you that, um, looking at, when we started revisiting the overlay district, we did look at, um, doing something around the mall and those properties, but as a separate district.
Right.
Distinct from the Lake Osceola. Um...
Oh, okay.
Because those are really straight commercial.
Yeah.
Um, and the mall really has another character to it and a whole nother set of, um, you know, things that it's going through right now, so.
Right.
So we were looking at as, as another overlay with another set of parameters unique to, you know, those handful of properties that are close to the mall and around Lee Boulevard.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, oh, okay, I, it was just a, I was just looking at, if we're doing that, why aren't we doing that section there and then all the, all you'd have is the, like I said, the four or five houses that are on East Main Street right there?
Yep.
Um, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. We can always expand it, right?
Yeah, and for instance, Tom, I mean, you know, it had the, had, had we done an overlay district that was overlaid on those properties, the New York Self Storage that we just went through and you guys did some legislative change, they could have done all of that possibly through the overlay district, so.
Right.
So, okay, interesting, okay.
So why didn't happen that, that earlier?
Cause we weren't doing it.
We weren't doing it.
We didn't have the overlay district for that yet, so.
But, John, let me just ask the board. This is the new world for the people who are there, they are scared.
Yeah, okay, I understand, I understand.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, uh, you know, your, your thoughts, you know? Why, why the world came out to be overlaid, that they think that he can do anything he want? And that's why, you know, I'm just, just, you know, I'm not questioning, I'm just learning it, you know?
You can't do, you can't do anything that you want.
Right.
You can, there's additional uses. And the reason those additional uses are in there is because what we're seeing out in the world in terms of the changes, for instance, Amazon effect, uh, flight from the city from COVID, the, uh, millennials, difference in millennials, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's, that's why, um, the overlay districts have those uses in it, but you cannot do anything that you want. Um, we've really only added the ability to do mixed use and the ability to do, um, multifamily in, in finite areas. Uh, Yorktown Heights and now we're looking at Osceola. Um, you can't do, you know, warehousing or transfer facilities if you wanted. Uh, in Yorktown Heights, you couldn't do like a Top Golf Entertainment Center, but up in Lake Osceola, I think that you could. So, you know, they're tailored to certain areas.
Now you're talking.
Yeah, now you're talking, you're right. Uh, you can't do anything that you want, and there are limitations. Uh, we've written it to be flexible, but those, the flexibility does have a cap.
Right.
So, you cannot do a building that has no parking, for instance. You have to provide parking, it has to be adequate, and if it's not adequate, uh, you have to show that you are able to have agreements or other parking available in the area. So they could, the planning board will be able to vary that, but uh, only within a sp- uh, a prescribed, uh, limit. I hope that answers your question.
If you go to the Tokyo and Singapore and Hong Kong, it's completely different, okay, how they live, they have a little tube, you know?
Oh, I know.
Four hour, you can sleep and then you go and then they change, you know?
Right, and somebody comes in and sleeps in your bed for the other four hours.
Well... Like our town, you know?
No dibs.
Yeah.
You know, you know what they call that in the Navy, right?
What?
It's hot cot.
What?
Hot, hot cot.
Hot cot.
In a hot cot. The hotel tiny, you know, it's, you will not believe that, how small it is, you know? The big ones are very expensive, but even the smaller, the student go to school or come from other part and unbelievable.
Can I? Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
May I just?
So...
No, I'm sorry, Councilman Patel, hold on one second, Councilman Roker is speaking, please.
Oh, that's okay, I'm, uh...
Thank you.
I just wanna read something that a resident wrote me today. Um, she says, "I know that economic concerns are most important. However, as you know, many people move to the suburbs to escape overdevelopment. I can see so many projects on the docket that when all are realized, it may possibly change the landscape of our, of, of Yorktown." And what I wrote her back is that, um, with the exception of Tommy, cause he was, he was born and raised here, we all lived here. Um, and, and we love it here, and while we are looking at, at, at having some newer projects in Yorktown, the emphasis is not to change who we are.
Right, I agree.
Just enhance who we are.
Great point.
Uh, Councilwoman, it's funny, cause I've seen a lot of the references to, uh, Yonkers North in some of the letters, Central Avenue. And, you know, I grew up down on Central Avenue and I could tell you, Yorktown is far from that. Uh, but the one, the one interesting thing I find that is if we don't find a way to evolve a little bit...
I totally agree with you.
The, the, the way of life and the services and everything that makes Yorktown so great to live in, we'll start that, we'll start to have to chisel away at them and, and eventually, you know, where will they, where will they end up being, you know, where, where, where will our PD be, where will our school system be? If we don't find ways to, uh, to supplement the, the tax base and, you know...
Totally agree.
Yeah.
We have lots of...
Last thing, you know, tonight, are you gonna pull soon? Uh, and there was a Mohansik IBM lab, okay? Mohansik, where there is Mercy Collage there, you know? And then they built, so Mrs. Crystal, you know, the Hanover Farm?
Oh, yeah.
They, they, they want to build the United Nation over there.
Gotta put up Yorktown.
Yeah, and then, then, uh, then it planned the IBM, or whatever it was, so she was very rich. And, uh, she told me when she was alive, you know, I mean, it's a listen, United Nation over there and IBM here, or the other way around, you know? And then they want to build a very large filtration plant, you know? Right there, uh, uh, around the reservoir, you know? So, idea can come and go when people decide, you know?
Yep. Do you wanna quickly go over Yorktown, the Yorktown map?
Yeah, just, just a last point, last point, so i- i- if this Summit Hill property is under consideration, I should put it in the, in the boundary, right? Because since you're gonna talk about it further, I expect. And if it, if it doesn't last, then, then we change the boundary back, right? Okay. Is that acceptable?
Whatever we do for one, we do for the other.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I just, I, Vishnu brings up a point that we are supposed to get the United Nations and so on and so forth, also where the mall is now was supposed to be IBM. That was supposed to be the Watson Research Center and we were so...
No, not, not the mall area, no.
Oh, yeah, it was, yes, it was.
Yes.
Not IBM Research, no.
Well, it was gonna be an IBM anyway, I don't know if it was gonna be Research or not, but then we were supposed to have a hotel because IBM was gonna fill it. They guaranteed whoever it was so many rooms. So I just want folks to be cautious that our, our, that, that we evolve too quickly and we don't become short-sighted to the future. Because the short-sightedness of previous town boards
is why we're here now.
What's that?
It's why we're here now.
Yeah, but we got, we, we have to be careful that we don't move too quickly, that...
I agree.
That we don't evolve too quickly because it's, it, it could look like Yonkers North. I, I, I disagree with you, Ed, it could very well look like Yonkers North.
Well, the, and Tom, I appreciate that sentiment, I don't mean to bel- belabor this, but, um, to your point, I think the, the value of doing the overlay districts is that you are really doing a, a small area in which to allow this type of flexibility. And by, by virtue of that, you're, you're not allowing it everywhere, it's not a blanket, uh, type of situation. And so it's a very, uh, confined space, if you will. So, and I think that, that offers some protection in the regard that you just spoke of.
Yeah, just, and, and you're a hundred percent right, and, and I know we had to move on to a couple of other things here, but that was why, that, that particular area there between the mall and in back of the Getty Station we talked about today was, um, supposed to be where the hotel was.
Hotel, yeah.
And that was squashed by a town board, I don't recall the year, because of traffic concerns.
Yeah.
So we have to be careful.
And can we take a quick look at, uh, Yorktown Heights?
Yes.
No.
No. I'd like to go along with that, that's for sure. So this is, you've seen this before, this really hasn't changed much from when we first, um, proposed it to you, and I just wanna point out a couple of things. The hotel site that we were talking about is actually within the boundary. The question is whether or not you actually write the use in, but it, it, it's been in the boundary. Uh, and then, uh, I wanna remind you that the, uh, Recreation Office and Senior facility that may be going on Beaver, Beaver Ridge, you may consider, uh, putting that in the overlay district to accommodate that. Um, otherwise, uh, well, I, you know, I, I don't know that the office component is, is allowed in the RSP two.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, either, either in RSP, you have to add in, do a legislative change for governmental use of some sort, uh, which would then restrict that building in some fashion for a long time, or if you do it to the overlay district. So I just wanna point that out. Uh, secondly, there was some discussion regarding removing the, there's a small section of the top of Front Street that is included in this overlay, and there was just some discussion about removing that, and if you'd like that, let us know and we will...
Can we talk about doing Front Street as a whole district on its own?
Yes, that's exactly right, I mean, I think that that's not a bad thing.
I don't think so.
Okay, so if you, if you instruct us, we can take that straight line that goes along the old railroad and just
Right.
down and just take that, that funny shape out of there.
I, I think Front Street should be a standalone.
Okay.
That's just my feeling.
Yeah.
The Front Street uses are very different than, than the uses that you see in the, in the rest of the Heights hamlet.
I agree with you.
It sounds like an industrial area.
Right, it, it, well, it is.
A, a clean industrial area.
Right, right, the, the thing you have to be, and I think why we initially put it in, what you have to be concerned with is, again, the word transition, so as you move from, you know, the, the public face of the town, of the village, which is the commercial area, along with residential areas, you need to have a border that brings you down into the, the less nice spot, which is light industrial or industrial. You know, the, the, the highway garage doesn't do well in that regard, but if you notice on the other corner, they have more of a commercial entity there, so that's, that's the only section there, but certainly it can come out and you can deal with that at a later date. I just wanted to remind you of that.
I mean, I, I, I personally, I don't have an issue with, uh, the Beaver Ridge suggestion from, from John, it seems to make sense, unless we wanna do something with the zoning on that to make sure that governmental buildings are allowed.
So we just have to push that, that line back a little bit from where, from where the, uh, uh, senior center may, may be?
It wouldn't go, it would engulf that gray, that gray area right there.
Right, right.
Now, whose property is it? Is it Beaver Ridge's property?
Yeah, it's here.
Beaver Ridge property and the parking would be part of the Soundview site.
Right.
For some of the parking, I think.
How they can gi- uh, offer to give it free to the senior, okay? It, this is some kind of a, you know, it's a...
Probably we've got a hell of a good lawyer.
It's, it's part of, part of the pilot agreement, uh...
Right.
You know?
I like the good lawyers, I, uh, answer better.
Yeah, I don't like that one, Adam, sorry.
Wait till you need me.
He's not asleep, he's awake.
There you go, I thought he left.
I, I said, what, what does the board, does the board have any thoughts on this, if we wanna include it?
Sure.
Yeah, we should include that, and I definitely think Front Street would make... Yeah, we should include that and I definitely think Front Street would make a, a very appropriate uh, uh.
It's a bad idea.
We'll shift Front Street out, we're gonna take Front Street out. And then we'll shift the, we'll shift the, the boundary to engulf the, the Beaver Ridge to make sure that governmental buildings are allowed in the zoning.
Yeah, I just think we'd have a non.
Yeah, that, that would be a good idea. John, what are, what are, what are the, what are the uh, the violet colors here, um, towards like the back of Town Hall? Yeah, that would be your problem.
That's the I two zoning, the light industrial.
Oh, that is, that is all light industrial, okay, so we basically.
This parcel is the bike path, so.
Okay, then we really can't do a heck of a lot there. The uses don't match, so the uses that we've tried. Excuse me, Councilman, so the uses in the Heights Hamlet don't match the uses in the industrial zones. Yeah. That's why we were saying push them out.
Where is Town Hall, show me?
Here.
Right there.
Okay, and we know we own property behind it, right?
You, that's what you own right there, those two pieces.
One, two, three.
Three, actually, yep.
Okay.
Right? That's it. Okay. You guys, you guys know what adjustments were made there?
Yeah.
The Heights.
We'll make those adjustments and, and uh, when you're ready to have us back to continue the discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think what the goal should be is to insert the amendments that we discussed today into the, the, the language amendments. Into the, into the legislation and uh, and then bring it back to us in two weeks. For any last comments from the board and maybe we can, we can, I know we were starting to get comments from. From some of the other boards that are in the town, so maybe we can refer it out and just started getting feedback and comments.
But uh, is this law should be. On, for the public to review if they want to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it new, before we refer out, you know?
Well, no, I'm, well, it, it would be part of the process.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be part of the process, so, so this way, you know, we can get all the feedback that we can. And then we can decide from there where, how we wanna move, but I think, I think we're at the point, because we're starting to get feedback from other boards. About, about some i- i- ideas that they have, so let's, let's include.
Let me ask uh, the board just for ten seconds, the, the Soundview property. Is advertised at the, senior will get the uh, discounted rate hu- housing, this is not true. This, okay, we, they are not going to give you any discount to the senior, they advertise is. This is, this is the perception of the people, that you will have a place for a senior, it is a senior. Housing doesn't mean that this is the discounted uh, uh, you know, rental property, that's number one. Number two is, is all the handicap access are available, has to be there in every public building, rental night, you know? No matter where you go, they have it like that, right, so they see if you're gonna rent it, you, so that is a two different things happening here. So we have to make it very clear and a builder has to make it very clear, listen, this is not just free uh, cheap housing you're gonna get it. I mean, this is where it is advertised, it's some people things like that, oh, we are building the senior housing. And that's really not true, you know, that's what the, the builder said the other day.
He, he said it was senior housing, but he didn't make reference to its affordability, I, other than I think that. All of the units, whether senior or not, will be uh, more market rate, so you're right, that they're not af- they're not affordable. But I don't think that he.
No, they're not affordable.
Well, you know, you're just jumping the gu- the gun, we don't even have an overlay district yet, which means that he can't even be thought of being developed yet. So I don't even know why you're thinking.
Asking the question, Alice, uh, they are asking us the question, so we are discussing, right, here, you know?
If, if I may, uh, yeah, there, there was, there was, they spoke about market rate. Uh, they, they spoke about, they spoke about senior accessible.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, every building has to be accessible in a, in a, in a, like that.
Right, in the rental, but not the co-op and the, and the townhouses.
Yeah.
How, how, how do people go upstairs with the senior in the second and third floor, right, that's another thing.
No, they, they, it had, the whole, the whole project has to be ADA compliant.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay, that's, that's a better way, you know?
And then, then the uh, the other thing, I, I will, I will say that I've spoken to uh, we've been approached by numerous people. Uh, try, trying to find out not only about that project, but the Kmart project, uh. Seniors living in our town and, you know, uh, wheth- whether it's, I don't wanna cut my lawn anymore, I don't wanna shovel snow anymore, I'm hearing a lot of that.
Raising my hand.
Yep, and, and a lot of people, you know, saying, hey, this is, we feel this is a great way for us to be able to stay in town. I, I forget, I think I might have been in Edwin's the other day and someone I approached me and just started talking to me about it. Oh, and to, oh, like today in uh, Yorktown Pharmacy, one of the gentlemen there, and you know, they're, they're looking at, uh, you know. Being able to, to, when, when we to- they talk about affordable. Uh, rentals or co-ops and condos are, are, are less onerous than our tax burden for some of our seniors. Uh, and I think that's where that uh.
Yeah.
That, that comes in and that's what they're looking, I'd rather rent and, and then own and pay taxes per se, just pay a portion of the taxes. So, you know, I, I think that uh, that might be where some of that confusion is.
I'm sorry, Councilman. Just to be clear for our staff, uh, in the amendments that they're putting together, is the board including the height request?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't have a problem with it since it's only three parcels.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either.
Go to the board. I'm seeing a couple of mods, okay.
The height request.
Alright, so can you include that in your amendments, please, when you, when you redraft, John, Rob?
Yeah, I'll, I, I think that we'll look at. Doing a specific line item for, you know, the over ten acre that you can get up to the.
Yeah, right.
And, and leave, leave the basic at the forty.
I agree. I agree. Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate, you know, it's a late night, I know you had a planning board last night, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Alright, so we're gonna end on some resolutions, uh, we'll take them together. Uh, let's see, we have a resolution, the town board of the town of Yorktown will hold a joint meeting with the Yorktown Coalition on Community Safety and Engagement on Thursday. March fourth, twenty twenty one, it will begin at seven PM, again, this is part of our, our compliance with Executive Board of two oh three, the report was released. Uh, so members of the public can read it online, it is on the town's website. We're gonna appoint August Apothecola, see, I can do it, I can do it. You have to say that fast at all times. Oh, uh, so we're gonna have Aug- Augie as a member and co-chair of the Arts and Culture Committee. We're also gonna appoint Jennifer Bernbach and Allison Montana as members of the Arts and Culture Committee, we're very excited about that. Uh, they'll be joined, uh, Bruce Apar from the Chamber of Commerce and uh, and I know they have another member that they've appointed. Uh, we're also going to appoint Mike Matone to a six-year term as a member of the Community Housing Board. Uh, so we're happy to see Mike continuing to.
Nice young man.
Yes, yep, I did the Over Tippers Club with him at Spicy Food Truck. Smile on that guy's face when he heard, it was amazing, uh, so we have a few others, authorize the supervisor to execute the necessary agreements to forego the thousand dollars a month. Revenue from the town's agreement with Crown Castle or the French Hill Tower, this is specifically for the enhancement to the, to wipe, to the radio system. Police Department that we've been pushing. We have a um, a resolution from the Finance Department, authorize the comptroller to pay the cash value unused time for Jennifer Leonard. We also have a resolution from the Yorktown Police Department to authorize them to purchase one twenty twenty one Ford. Police Interceptor SUV. We also have some personnel that we will, we've proposed, I'll read them uh, in their entirety. Uh, be resolved, the town board of the town of Yorktown hereby rescinds its resolution dated March twelfth, twenty nineteen, appointing Michael Grasso. As a road maintenance foreman effective February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Be it resolved that Michael Grasso is hereby appointed via reclassification from Deputy Town Superintendent of Highway to General Foreman, job class code zero four two zero dash. This is effective February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, to be paid from Yorktown CSA Salary Schedule A. Uh, excuse me, Salary Schedule A Group Seventeen, step three, which is eighty seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars annually. Be resolved, Westchester County Department of Human Resources approved the reclassification of Michael Grasso. Be resolved that Ted, Teddy Devlin is hereby appointed via reclassification from General Foreman, job class code zero four two zero dash. O two to Assistant General Foreman, job class code zero four two one dash O two, effective February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, to be paid from Yorktown CSA. Salary Schedule Group A, excuse me, Salary Schedule A Group Sixteen, step five, which is ninety thousand, one hundred and fifty nine dollars. Annually, be resolved, Westchester County Department of Human Resources approved the plat- the reclassification of Ted Devlin. And be resolved that Philip Marino is hereby reappointed to General Foreman, job, job class code zero four two, zero four two zero dash O two. Effective February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, to be paid. From Yorktown CSA Salary Schedule A Group Seventeen, step four, which is ninety one thousand and ninety three dollars annually. Motion for. Give a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All motions carry. Is there, with no other business before the board, I'm just gonna check real quick. Uh. Do we need, do, Diana, do you want me to read the HESBREZO, or do, are you, are we okay with what was passed earlier tonight?
You're referring to the one that um, Adam sent?
Well, I didn't read that one, uh, Councilwoman Roker made a motion from the floor, if you'd like me to read the REZO, I can, or we can, or if that satisfies it, then. I'm comfortable with that as well.
Up to you.
I'm fine with Councilwoman Roker's motion. Okay, with that being said, uh, we'll uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night, Yorktown, thank you very much. Bye-bye.